We're our most faithful member at three o'clock.
He really is.
Oh, is that one?
Hi, Amy.
Sign this one, that's it?
I don't know. Fill it all out already?
Seventeen thousand questions in here.
The February thirteenth.
The February thirteenth, 2023 regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 3:00 PM. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to AB 361 and YCCD Resolution Number 22-23.12. Good afternoon, everyone. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members and others who are participating via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted with the exception of the board members, student trustee, and chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. The district will also make the recording available on the YCCD YouTube channel for 30 days in accordance with Board Policy 2365 Recording. As a reminder, board members are asked to use the raise hand feature via Zoom when they wish to speak. Everyone is encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda, requesting public comments may be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. I'll now ask our board stenographer to conduct the roll call for attendance.
Trustee Aguilaj?
Present.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Garrett?
Present.
Trustee Hinton, with you being virtual, respond to the three questions listed in the agenda.
Yes, I'm present and operating.
Trustee Nicolau?
Here.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
And Board President Beggs?
Here.
For the record, student trustee is not in the room. Form is established.
Thank you. Are there any public comments that you know of?
Two point three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be declared at this time? None? Two point four, are there any public comments?
There was a public comment request submitted earlier this week. However, I believe that's going to be coming at five thirty.
That's what I thought. And I don't see any raised hands.
Any raised hands.
Okay. So let the record state that there are no public comments at this particular time. So we are now going to adjourn to closed session at 3:03. We will be looking at three point one, Appointment of the Interim President. Three point two, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Three point three, Discipline Dismissal Release Reassignment Appointment. Three point four, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Employee Organizations. Three point five, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Employees Organizations. Three point six, Property Negotiator Conference with the Real Property Negotiator. And three point seven, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release.
Madam President, just for a moment, I forgot earlier. Would this be the time, and I know we'll probably do this at 5:30, to just again thank Carrie Rasmussen, our district legal counsel, for being here? Thank you.
Yes, I think we're going to do that later, too, when there are more people here. Not that the people who are here aren't great. So anyway, we are adjourning now to closed session. Thank you.
One of these days, I'll get the button right the first time. The February 13th, 2023 regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 5:31. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to AB 361 and YCCD Resolution Number 22-23.12. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members and others who are participating in person or via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted with the exception of the board members, student trustee, and chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. The district will also make the recording available on the YCCD YouTube channel for 30 days in accordance with our Board Policy 2365 Recording. As a reminder, board members are asked to raise their hands via Zoom when they wish to speak. I think we have one board member on Zoom. Everyone is encouraged to mute their audio and not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested that public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. So... I'm going to ask Milt to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, 4.2. All right, we need the 4.3, Establishment of Quorum. So this message is for trustees that are remoting in virtually or by phone. If, when I call for roll call, if you can confirm and respond to the three questions listed in the agenda. Trustees, can you hear me well? Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? Student trustee Maria Marquez.
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Davis. Trustee Garrett.
Present.
Trustee Hinton. Trustee Hinton is remoting in by phone. Trustee Hinton, you're muted.
Present and yes to all three.
Thank you. Trustee Nicolau.
Present.
Vice President Richards.
Here.
And Board President Beggs.
Here.
Quorum is established.
Thank you. Next, we're up to 4.4, Report Out from Closed Session. By a unanimous vote, the Board of Trustees voted to not renew the contract of employee ID 0919604 and continue placement of employee on paid administrative leave. This motion was made by Milton Richards and seconded by Darren Garrett. There, it was unanimous. There were no no votes and no abstentions. The motion carried.
Thank you. If I may just add, so this was in relation to Item 3.7 on the closed session agenda.
Thank you.
For the record, thank you.
All right. Next up is 4.5, Changes in Order of Business. And we need to move 8.3 to before closed session. Sorry, before consent agenda. Okay. So up next is 4.6, Approval of Minutes of the December 19th, 2022 Board of Trustees Special Meeting.
So moved.
So moved. Okay.
You're going to do a roll call vote, or what do you want for that?
So trustee Richards, this is your first.
And Nancy is the second.
Correct.
Trustee Aguilar.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Garrett.
Yes.
Trustee Hinton.
Yeah.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
Vice President Richards.
Yes.
And President Beggs.
Yes.
Vote is 7-0, motion carries.
All right, we're up to 4.7, Approval of Minutes of the January 11th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So you got that, Jenny and Don? Okay.
Yes. Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Nicolau.
Aye.
Vice President Richards.
Yes.
President Beggs.
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar.
Yes.
Vote is 7-0, motion carries.
Okay, so we are now up to public comments at this time. I asked the board stenographer to alert me to, if you've received any more cards for public comments.
No, you have what we've received thus far.
Okay, so I think we'll do these first and then we'll move to online. So let's start with Jesse Vasquez. And if I mispronounce anything, I apologize in advance.
Good evening. Board of trustee members, Chancellor Young, and President Redwing and Tran. My name is Jesse Vasquez, and I've had the privilege and honor of coaching Maresse Junior College Wrestling Team for the past 15 years. I am here tonight to talk about the proposed location of the Student Fitness Center. But before I do that, please allow me to give a brief history of the amazing wrestling program. The MJC Wrestling Team is only one of two continuously competing colleges since 1957. The past season, the college had six wrestlers placed in the state and one state champion. The team finished the season with an overall record of 7-2 and reached second place at the NorCal Championships and fifth place at the state championships. The current wrestling room is located on the south side of the MJC East Campus Gymnasium. During my tenure as a coach, there have been several attempts to convert the wrestling room into a weightlifting room for football, now as a student fitness center. As a part-time employee, I'm not able to attend most athletic division meetings because I work a full-time job. After a recent division meeting, I was informed blueprints for the Student Fitness Center were developed and proposed. Fitness Center location is the wrestling room. I have never been consulted about any of these proposed changes. VPI Sanders stated in an email, "Members of the board want us to act now to provide a fitness space for students." The current renderings illustrated that the wrestling room would work well. I understand Student Fitness Center benefits all students and have looked at other potential suitable locations across the east campus. VP Sanders stated in an email he considered moving the wrestling area up to the second floor of women's PE. While Dean Stavridakis advised me in an email... While Dean Stavridakis advised me in an email, "I should look at rooms in the electronics building as possible locations for wrestling." The second floor of women's PE measures 48 feet by 33 feet, while the current wrestling room measures 45 by 96 feet. The second floor PE is only 37% the size of the current wrestling room. Further complicating matters, I looked at the electronics building rooms. VPI Sanders wrote in the email, "The main football weight room will remain in electronics, thus limiting the amount of available space." When I spoke with several electronics instructors about moving the wrestling room into electronics building, they were appalled. They had no idea they might be displaced and had, they had not been consulted about a possible move. The current location for the wrestling room is the best place for our student athletes to practice, is roughly three times larger than the proposed women's PE room. Additionally, it would be allowed, the growth of the wrestling program, to include a potential women's wrestling team as the sport is exploding at the college level and would allow female student athletes an opportunity to continue their studies at four-year institutions. Furthermore, the current location is conducive to hosting meetings as the wrestling mats need to be moved mere feet rather than stored in off-site locations. The showers are closed, and there's enough room to grow the program and install much-needed wrestling equipment. On a different level, MJC is an equity-minded, driven college and Hispanic-serving institution. The wrestling program allows our student athletes a chance to further their education through this athletic portal. Additionally, many of our student athletes are first-generation college students. A successful transfer of students to four-year institutions can break the poverty chain for generations to come. Lastly, VPI Sanders emailed, "But with new mats throughout the room, upgrades to its sound system, fresh paint, new ceiling tiles, it could be really cool about the impending move." I respectfully disagree. I believe moving the wrestling room would be fatal and a fatal detriment to our student success and our program. There is no other location currently on campus that offers the same or anything near the wrestling room that is currently there. I thank you for your time and consideration on this matter.
Thank you very much. And I'll reiterate that anything that's not on the agenda that's addressed in public comments, we cannot comment on. So, thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have Chelsea King with the California Health Collaborative.
My name is Chelsea King, and I am a coordinator for the Young Adults Fighting Tobacco Coalition and a program assistant for the California Health Collaborative. And today, I wanted to come and talk to you all about the importance of allowing your campuses to decide to go 100% smoke-free and how we at Yaft and CHC can help your campuses while they are transitioning to a smoke-free environment. During your last meeting, some of you expressed concerns about allowing your campuses to make the decision to go smoke-free, and I wanted to address a few of them today. First, I know there was some concern about enforcement and how such a policy could be enforced. We always recommend education as a way to enforce a smoke-free policy. And CHC can help your campuses purchase temporary signage as well as outline steps to put this policy into action. These steps can include having student ambassadors give out small cards to people smoking on campus, reminding them of the policy change and why it's important. It can also include having professors add the policy to their syllabi and sending emails to all students and faculty every three months for the first year to remind them of the policy change. It's important to note that over time, the social norm will change, and it will become common knowledge to not smoke on campus, as it is with many other campuses. I also know there was some concern about making students who smoke uncomfortable on campus and that they may feel unwelcome. Luckily, smoking rates have gone down significantly over the past few years, and people who smoke are part of the minority. And many places already do not allow smoking, including all of the CSUs and UCs that many of your students will be transferring to. By allowing your campuses to go smoke-free, you will make their transition to these institutions easier, and you will also be putting the health of the majority of your campus population first. Yaft and CHC want to work with you and your campuses that want to go smoke-free. We believe that we can work together to make a healthier and safer environment for your campus community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we have Wendy Bird.
Thank you, Chairman Beggs and members of the council. You have a really nice, loud mic. My name is Wendy Bird, and I'm speaking to you as a retiree of Modesto Junior College in the Yosemite Community College District. I want to talk about the impact of instability from two different perspectives. First of all, I want to talk about how it impacts the morale of the employees and the campus climate, and then I want to talk about the impact financially, what instability costs. Now, I was a former advisor for ASMJC for 11 years when I worked for the college, and so quite naturally, my first thought was to go and talk to students, to get feedback from them. And so I asked them, "How does the constant change of leadership affect them?" And basically, what they said was that it makes them lose trust in the system, and they talked about how they feel devalued on campus and that their voice doesn't matter. I asked them too, "How did you like the previous president?" And they perked up and they smiled. They said, "Well, we liked Dr. B." And I said, "Well, what was it that you liked about him?" And they said, "He was a good president. He always made time to listen to us, and he talked to us. He made us feel like he cared and like we mattered. He really seemed to care about students." I also talked to classified staff. I talked to administrators. I talked to faculty. And one thing, one common thing that I saw with everyone was sadness and apathy and fear. I asked the students, I got back, I want to get back to my conversation with students. I asked them, "What was their relationship with the board?" And they said, "They feel like the board doesn't care. The board is just waiting them out," that their thoughts and ideals don't matter. And I asked them, "What was their relationship with the chancellor?" And chancellor, they said that whenever they tried to talk to you, you dominate the conversations. They don't feel that you're listening to them and that they, I could tell that they wished they had a better relationship with the chancellor and the board. I've talked to numerous classified staff, and some are saying, "Well, I wonder if it's going to be my job next." Because that's the psychological damage that happens when you see a common pattern of people losing their jobs. And I think that a good suggestion that I would like to make is for the campus to consider doing a campus climate survey, one that focuses on morale and one that focuses on relationships with supervisors. Because I also talked to staff, and many were saying that they felt that the micromanagement style of the board has also infiltrated the style of the managers and that the managers, in some cases, don't appreciate the work or respect the workers, and that it's extremely unpleasant in a toxic atmosphere, working under that old type of leadership style. So in doing this campus climate survey, I don't think that it would be as effective coming from the college because we already know that there's lack of trust and lack of confidence in the board and the leadership in the college. So I would suggest that perhaps maybe the students do that. We all know that even though you may say things are confidential, anything that goes electronically over devices within the college, people will fear giving their true answer because they think they'll get retaliated against, and retaliation is real and true. The next thing I want to talk about is the financial impact. And in order for me to do that, I really have to have some questions answered. And I don't blame you for this because you all, you know, just came. This is a systemic problem that has been going on for at least 20-something years, and it's not going to get fixed overnight. I do hear that you're doing some good things in the right direction, and that's good. But I do think that we really have to take a look at a lot of different things. And I would like to know what the salaries are of, or how much money has been spent over the last 10 years in lawsuits, in administrative leaves, in replacing people? How many? I know that when you hire these companies to come and do a search, there's a cost for that. They come and do a search. They pick out good people for you, and then the people come, and then for whatever reason, they don't have a successful time here, but yet they leave and other places pick them up gladly and quickly. So I'd like to know more about the financial cost of instability. And I'll put it all in writing for you because I don't want to get played off like the students feel that they can't get really good answers to their questions. I think as a taxpayer and as a retiree and a community servant, that we all deserve answers to those questions. So I'm hoping I don't have to put it in the form of a Freedom of Information request, but if I do, I could do that. It shouldn't be necessary to find those kind of answers because that should be public knowledge. And I just want to thank you for your time. I want you to, you know, just consider the deep concern that many of us in the community have. This is a community college. You all are all here to serve students. When you don't have a good relationship with students, I mean, that's a red flag right there. And so I hope that you will do more to try to build a better relationship with the students. I hope that you will help them to feel that their opinion and their work is valued and that you will mentor them through a good process of being a good student leader. Fear, retaliation, and all of those other things, that's not the way to go, but that's what's happening. And I've heard it over and over from students, faculty, staff, and administrators, so I know it's true. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Nancy Portius-Thomas.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Nancy Portius-Thomas. I live in Modesto. I moved back to this area after having lived on the Central Coast for the last 30 years where I work. I moved to this area to care for my aging parents. Some of you may know them. My mother was Jesse West. My stepdad was Jim West. Jim was the foundation president here at Monterey Peninsula. Excuse me. I worked at Monterey Peninsula College, and I slip that up once in a while. Anyway, at Monterey, at Modesto Junior College for many, many years. My family loved this college. I love this college. I'm a graduate of Modesto Junior College. I entered your nursing program a long time ago. I was the top student in the nursing class, graduated with honors, and was outstanding nurse of the year. It was a great foundation for me in this community. It was the beginning of an educational foundation that would go on to other degrees and other careers. I even returned to MJC to finish their architecture transfer program and launched an entirely different career, which has been enormously successful. I am speaking tonight to honor my parents. Thank you. To honor my parents who gave so much to this school, not only in time, but of their economic They would be very happy that I was here tonight because obviously, they wouldn't want their contribution, which is ongoing, by the way, through your charitable trust, to be squandered. I'm also speaking on behalf of thousands of students and families, hard-working people who are barely scraping to get by in this community. I serve them as public health, migrant health, and school nurse throughout Stanislaw County. Contrary to what you may guess, I was not born as a child of economic privilege. I grew up in the small town of Escalon on a little farm and was raised by my mother from the time I was 10 years old. She worked full-time. We scrimped and saved for everything. We worked. My sister and brother and I worked from the time we were 11. We did all kinds of jobs. We worked in agriculture. We had a little farm, which didn't do much other than pay taxes. We worked in fruit yards, cutting fruit as we got older. I worked in the canary. I worked cleaning houses and businesses. My senior year in high school, I worked as a professional model. I entered the program at MJC as an 18-year-old. At the time, the nursing program, and I'm only guessing that it's still a really high-quality program. It was a prestigious program at that time. It was a two-year program. You enter, you take 18 to 20 units per semester, year-round, nonstop. You do your coursework, you do your lab work, you work in the hospital, and then you study. My days were at least 14-hour days every single day for two solid years, but I finished in two years. A month later, I took the California Registered Nursing Exam, passed with flying colors, and was offered jobs all around the state and the country.
That was the timer.
My time is up?
Can you wrap it up?
I can wrap it up.
Thank you.
My concern here tonight, as it's been, you may have seen my article in the paper. I have extra copies for you.
Thank you.
Is that this community needs a very effective, very strong, effective president. Congratulations, sir, for your interim position. We need to offer our students hope. We need to offer our families hope. When only 13% of workers in this community have a good job, 22% have a job that is, maybe has the possibility of becoming a good job. 65% of the workers in this community have an unsustainable job. They cannot pay the bills. Multiple families are living together, trying to make it work. I know what it's like. I know what it's like to worry. I know what it's like to see my mother worry. We need a leader. We need someone who can be in this community every single day, working with all sectors of business. We need a leader who will not let their students down, who will not let the families down. People deserve better. It's unacceptable. The consequences of not doing that, you will find the answers at the DA's office. You'll find the answers at the Public Health Department, any health institution in the community.
Thank you.
You will find the answers in Child Protective Services. We need action now, and we need you to support the amazingly well-done- We need you to support the amazingly well-done Stanislaw 2030 Initiative. I just read it this week. I read it. I had no idea about it. I, I can't, I can't speak.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm out of cards. Do you have any others? Okay. Is there anyone with a raised hand? There's a raised hand. Jim Solomon? You are up next.
Thank you. My speech is approximately five minutes and 45 seconds. I'm hoping that I am given the same time as the last two speakers. Good evening. My name is Jim Solomon. I'm professor of Communication Studies at MJC. At the January 11th YCCD Board Meeting, self-appointed community leaders spoke during public comments. Their theme addressed the dismissal of our latest MJC president, referenced our previous MJC president's early departure, and made absurd inferences regarding MJC's credibility in both our community and around the state, given our 20-plus-year presidential turnover history. Our local newspaper, the Modesto Bee, has both reported and editorialized this issue several times now. Asking why MJC has experienced early presidential departures from our community's college is reasonable. Should we be worried about MJC is a fair question? However, the sanctimonious presenters made the following offensive statements: Personally attacking MJC as, quote-unquote, "an embarrassment", defaming our college by falsely claiming, quote, "MJC is failing its students in a myriad of ways," unquote, and slandering MJC by stating the college is being, quote, "derelict in its duty," unquote. From the many dedicated employees like me and the many students past and present, of which I am also an alum, who found these feckless comments appalling, we respond to these armchair quarterbacks with, "How dare you?" No, MJC is not an embarrassment. But what is an embarrassment, however, is to conflate our current board members, as well as our current chancellor, with the 20-plus-year history of MJC's presidential turnover. If people are concerned about the two recent early departures, then stay on topic. Why do the 17 previous trustees and eight previous chancellors get a guilt-free card for a two-decade turnover issue? Certainly, they are more at fault just in sheer numbers of MJC presidents alone. 14 departed presidents is much larger than the recent two presidents who left. When did we ever hear the so-called community leaders a decade or more ago about the presidential turnover? Was it not a concern then? Apparently not. And no, MJC is not failing its students in a myriad of ways. This false claim is both blatantly uneducated and horribly offensive. MJC's agricultural, athletic, forensics, and honors programs have a history of excellence. MJC's music and theater departments have trained talented students whose performances our community enjoys. MJC's nursing program is a gem. Our bachelor's degree in respiratory care gives our community an exceptional opportunity, and our students' learning on actual cadavers is a unique experience. MJC provides the well-loved Great Valley Museum and Planetarium for the community to enjoy. MJC's counselors guide our students and provide compassionate service to those in crisis. MJC's clubs and other student programs give numerous opportunities for socialization, growth, and support. MJC's classified professionals and deans juggle an overwhelming number of tasks and are student-focused. The MJC Foundation's growth is tremendous due to the generosity of the community. During the pandemic, MJC outperformed many other colleges around the state that struggled with enrollment. And finally, MJC annually celebrates a couple of thousand earned associate degrees and certificates. Do these students and families think MJC is failing in students in a myriad of ways? Absolutely not. Finally, no, MJC is not derelict in its duty. But you know who is? The Modesto Bee. For 20-plus years, the Bee barely acknowledged MJC or the YCCD. And yet, Modesto City Schools and Stanislaw State seem to effortlessly use the Bee as their own public relations department. For two decades, the Bee has treated MJC and our district as the redheaded stepchild. And yet, the lead speaker on January 11th was the publishing editor of the Modesto Bee from 2000 to 2006. Where was the outrage when there were four MJC presidential turnovers during her time at the Bee? Where were our self-proclaimed community leaders? Exactly how often do YCCD trustee elections get any meaningful coverage compared to Modesto City Schools or other local school districts? The answer is never. And yet, the Bee has the arrogant presumption to claim an invested interest in our college and the district after two decades of abandoning us. Spare me. No, MJC is not an embarrassment, failing its students in a myriad of ways, nor derelict in its duty. But the self-anointed and self-righteous leaders who were not elected to speak on behalf of our community regarding MJC and our local newspaper who deserted our college and district for two decades are an embarrassment and derelict, respectively. And they owe our students and the employees who have served them an apology. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next, we have Morgan Haydock.
Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Morgan Haydock. I'm a student at MJC and the vice president of a youth-led tobacco control organization called Young Adults Fighting Tobacco. I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed district policy that would allow campuses to ban smoking. Every student deserves to get their education in a healthy and safe environment. But without smoke-free policies, YCCD campuses are not protecting their students' health from secondhand smoke or from becoming addicted themselves. 99% of people who smoke have their first cigarette before age 26. That's when they're college-aged. By allowing smoking on campus, colleges are taking a moment in a young person's life where they could reject the pressure to smoke and instead are solidifying that addiction by making it socially acceptable. Attendance at a community college is meant to prepare students for success upon graduation. However, most students will either transfer to a tobacco-free university or a tobacco-free workplace. By delaying the process, community colleges are making it more difficult for students to adjust in the future. At the last board meeting, there was some concern about enforcement of a smoking policy. Non-smoking enforcement can be as simple as removing designated smoking areas and replacing them with non-smoking signage and reminding students that are found smoking to respect the college's rules and providing them with resources to help them quit. This policy is the first step towards a healthier future for YCCD. And with leadership from our board, I believe it's a future that we can make a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Darren Kerr.
Good evening and thank you. I'm speaking on the same issue as the last speaker. And I'd like to urge the board to adopt a tobacco-free policy for all of YCCD's campuses. I am a MJC graduate. I attended here from 1984 to 1986. And although I'm not proud to admit it, the first cigarette I ever smoked was just outside Founder's Hall. We, we were in a three-hour math class. I wasn't all that good at math. And during break, some of my new friends and I went out there. And three of the five smoked. They offered me a cigarette, and I took it. Now, I'm lucky. The habit didn't take. I owe that, I think, to my parents and a girlfriend that said she'd kick me out if I continued. The fact of the matter is, there are a lot of people for whom it does take. And those are the people that I want to speak to you about tonight. In 2013, healthcare costs due to smoking were about $13.3 billion. Now, that's a dollar figure. But every one of those dollars represents human suffering. Human suffering was unnecessary. It would have been stopped. Some people will say, hey, this is about freedom and responsibility. I accept that argument in some ways. But let's remember that in a 2015 CDC study, the Centers for Disease Control discovered that 68% of all current smokers wanted to quit. This is not a voluntary habit. This is a medical condition. It is an addiction. And it's an addiction that the policies of MJC at the time in 1985, and fortunately still here in 2023, still fosters. Now, why is it that we haven't been able to end this yet? Well, a lot of it has to do with lies on the part of big tobacco. In one lawsuit that was brought about 20 years ago, it was found that big tobacco had engaged in a conspiracy and concealing and misrepresenting the addictive and harmful nature of tobacco and nicotine. And they, they did it again and again and again. And often, it was directed at children. So what I'm asking you to do tonight is nothing short of what our public schools in Modesto have done. Nothing short of what the Cal State University system has done. Nothing short of what the USIS system has done. I'm asking you to prioritize the lives of our students here in 2023 more than the profits of the habitual liars that inhabit the tobacco industry. I respectfully ask that YCCD Board of Trustees to end smoking on district properties and with it, the manipulation of vulnerable young people by corporations whose only goal is profit.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? Can't really see the, read down, see any additionally raised hands. Okay. All right. We're going to go and move ahead to the Board Committee report, starting with Finance Committee with Chair Garrett.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee, made up myself, trustees Aguilar and Richards, met on February the 6th. Routine and customary items talked about our district financial position, the district's quarterly financial position, and an FTE update. I had to leave about halfway through. So at some point here, very quickly, I'm going to turn it over to trustees Aguilar and Richards to finish up the other items we talked about, which is an update on the fitness center, as well as maintenance needs and issues at, at the respective colleges. I will say that I want to highlight our monthly and quarterly financial position. It, it shows the great and immense work that our colleges are doing to, to keep costs down and provide higher education and focus those dollars on, on our students. And I applaud everyone that is in that process, from our administrators, classified professionals, and everybody else that works behind the scenes. We also are, are very pleased to report that our full-time equal and student numbers district-wide are, are up. And, you know, we, we ended the Free For Me program at MJC starting this semester. We also implemented a, a process by which students who owed a certain amount of debt in a dollar amount could not enroll. And we set that at, at $500 and thought that was fair. And, and a lot of our classified professionals, administrators, and managers worked with students to bring them back on campus and worked with them to get that debt down so they could continue their goals. And despite all that, and the Free For Me was gone, we actually saw a higher percentage of, of new students enrolling, as well as, what I like to say is a recapture, continuing students coming back. So contrary to, to maybe the idea that, that, that we are failing, I think the fact that we're seeing a higher percentage than our statewide partners of, of FTEs on a, on a percentage, and the fact that we were able to reach out through new processes, and, and this really goes to the hard work of our student services and our classified professionals working in the student services area, of working with those students, getting to them early. And we still haven't even implemented all of the processes yet, which will be coming about this spring semester. We were able to see, again, a higher recapture of, of students from the prior semester, which is really what we want to focus on. I mean, new students are great. But if we can continue the students and focus on those students and, and working with them to achieve their higher educational goals in a short amount of time as possible, that's what's important to, to all of us. So with that, I'll turn it over to either trustee Aguilar or Richards to talk about the other items on the agenda. Thank you.
I think you pretty much covered everything that you wanted to talk about, the center. But you're going to speak on that on a different issue, right?
It is that. Some time ago, I made a, I did some research and I, I talked to the board about it, putting aside some money for a fitness center. And we've been kind of exploring that. And there was a preliminary presentation made by staff about using existing facilities. And that was very preliminary. It's still my goal as a, as a trustee to see a campus fitness center standalone facility. So I think in the near future, we'll see some more information on that. But I, I think, appreciate the comments by the wrestling coach tonight. And I, I think that there was some, some feeling that what was presented was a fait accompli, was just the beginning. But as, as trustee Garrett said, that our finances are pretty good right now, which, that's a good thing. Could change tomorrow, but right now it's pretty good. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, did you want to give the Board Policy Committee report?
I'll start it and I'll let you finish it. I think we met on Monday and, or Friday, I'm sorry. We usually meet on Monday. We met on Friday last week and went through the policies that are in the agenda. And I'm very grateful for those that have spoken up on the smoking policy. I, we're going to vote on that one. But we had talked about sending it to the chancellor and his staff to make up a, a better procedure. We were concerned at the smoking areas that were there. So I don't know about the rest of you from the policy, but with the new information and what we had said, I'd like to bring back the smoking policy next month. It'll be up to the board. And then Kimberly will go through the changes and the information of the policies that were gone over. And so until we go to a vote, I'll, I'll leave unless there's something, Leslie, that you want to talk about, or Jenny.
I think, I'll, I'll just add a little bit. If you've never joined a policy or procedure call before, they could be as boring as all get out. But once you join your second one, I think you really grow and, and start to understand that there's true purpose behind these calls. There's a, a true desire to come up with the policies and procedures that not only guide us to the future, but protect us. So I really respect the years and decades in leadership before me. I'm still learning and many times I'm, I'm not sure what I'm contributing. But it's great to have mentors like Leslie and Nancy. But I would encourage you to get a taste. I'm sure it looks like the board is, is distant or untouchable, but join us. Join these calls. Understand the procedure. Be part of the solution. So that would be my call to action because I have learned a great deal in just a few short policy and procedure committee meetings.
Thank you, Jenny. So we can talk about that more when we get up to that policy during the policy portion of our meeting. And so for now, I'm going to go to our 6.1 presentation, Modesto Junior College Dual Enrollment. Modesto Junior College Dual Enrollment.
Good evening, Chair Buggs. Good evening, Chancellor, Board of Trustees. My name is Deborah Hendricks, and I am from Leaders Forward Partnership Consultants. I have a colleague here, Scott Siegel, Dr. Scott Siegel, who's a former superintendent. We also have your staff, Brian Sanders, who is your Vice President of the Instruction piece of your house. And we have Angelica Guzman, who is your Dean of Enrollment Services. Along with us, representing from Series Unified School District, is Dr. Paul Rudehauser. And Dr. Rudehauser is the Director for Secondary Educational Services. So I'd like to share with you, and first, thank you for this honor to work with your staff. We are here, both Dr. Siegel and myself, as former school superintendents in Stanislaus County. We were charged with the effort and honor to be the convener and bring other superintendents in the district to meet with your staff and look at what could happen with dual enrollment. We know for, in the past, students in Stanislaus County that had the ability to be enrolled in a dual enrollment class was at the bottom quartile. Our hope in the future for students in Stanislaus County to be at the top of the quartile, having opportunity to be enrolled and go through the process of dual enrollment. We first reached out to all the superintendents in the county. That was on September 9th, excuse me. And we were honored when Series Unified took our challenge of having a pilot by the time January after the winter break came about with students. So if you might understand, that was quite a feat to do and get enrolled. And they are currently in a pilot, and we will hear more about that now. We had the formation, actually, I need to click, don't I? Or am I the one who clicks? Need to go on. Right here, yeah. I'm just talking away. I'm not moving, so let's on. You can see with the working group, we had several representatives, either the superintendents or someone from the district that's been on our working group. Your staff members, along with Dr. Siegel and myself, have worked with meetings to meet with all the superintendents. And we have an additional meeting in March. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Siegel to continue talking about our role as facilitators.
Thank you. Thank you. It's good to see you all this evening, and we are thankful for the opportunity to present to you. You're going to hear more from your staff and actually going to hear a lot from other people. But before we get to that, one of the things that we wanted to make sure when we looked at models and ways of doing this is through an equity lens. There's a geographical area, and it's much easier. There's fewer barriers in the way of a student who wants to, a high school student who wants to enroll in MJC who lives in Modesto, close to MJC, than there is to say a student who lives in Newman Crow's Landing School District, or Hillmar, or Ripon. And so one of the, some of the models that we're looking at, and the model we're piloting actually addresses that as a way to break that barrier and those, break those barriers down and get the opportunity for every student, every student in the MJC attendance area to attend college class while they're in high school. Excellent lead. No, I didn't do that. Another thing I want to leave you with, or not leave you with, but get you realizing early on in our presentation is that our goal as facilitators is for us to become unnecessary. We think that the staff at both the junior college and in the different high school districts have the talent and the ability to make this work without us. And so that's something that we're keeping in mind is to try to set up processes and ways of doing this that we become unnecessary as quickly as possible. With that, I'm going to, speaking of your staff, I'm going to hand it off to Brian, who is going to talk to you next.
All right. Good evening. Nice to be with you today. I wanted to commend our two consultants for really the work that they've done to convene our community leaders. It was a terrific decision to draw them in, ask them to be a part of things, especially young. You just know all of the people to talk to and it really facilitated these conversations. When I came to MJC, this was a project that was handed to me as well by the previous president and said, let's make some improvements here. And we had a lot of pieces in place, but we were missing the goal. We were missing some of our marketing information. The tech stuff here is too small. But really, what we first had to do is decide what is it we're trying to do? And really, we're trying to achieve everybody being in dual enrollment. But we set a goal that 75% of graduating high school seniors would be involved in a CCAP class of some sort by the time they graduate. And then they become MJC students. The next piece of this that we worked on is when the clicker works, there we go. We looked at the types of CCAP or dual enrollment classes we offer. First one being a general education track for transfer to university, which is also the A through G preparation for university students, or students in high school preparing for university. We're also looking at career preparation pathways. Those are our two main pathways. There's some information here about two plus two. Now, we won't be able to get into all of those details. That's a much longer presentation than I have with you tonight. But we looked at models too and realized that what we were doing in our previous attempts at CCAP were these first couple of columns where the college provides the instructor or sends a part-time teacher to the school district. Now, you heard mention of Hillmar and Newman and Denayer. And imagine trying to send a teacher around town like that. It becomes really difficult. It leads to high numbers of CCAP classes in a local to the college location, but not so much outside. We looked at partners from advice from Deborah, Sarah Noguchi from Modesto City Schools in particular, said, contact the folks at American River College, which we did. And they said, these are the two things that we're finding most successful. We're doing instructional service agreements where there's a high school teacher who meets our qualifications and is able to teach a class on our behalf. And we're doing embedded online classes where one of our college-level classes exists as a subset of a high school history course, for instance. So that was it. Those were the two triggers that we needed. And from that, we've really built on those offerings. So Angelica's here to talk to us about what's there. I'm running the clicker.
Okay. Good evening. I don't think I've had the pleasure of meeting everyone, so it's nice to see you all tonight. So now that we've gone over the spectrum of what it means to offer dual enrollment and the various ways that we can offer courses to high school students, what I want to, what I want to show right now is what we have been done, what we have been doing in the spectrum of offerings that we have planned for the upcoming school year. And so we worked really closely with our high school partners to determine the areas in which they're wanting to offer courses. And like Brian mentioned, our focus for this upcoming school year, our course is a neat A to G, so they'll meet the student's high school graduation requirement and then also serve as transferable courses as well. And so it sets it up very well for students. And so for the upcoming year, the screen is just a representation of the subject matters that there was a high interest in from the high schools. And of the subjects, there's mostly five schools that are really represented here with a high number offerings within our Language Arts and Education and then our School of Behavioral and Social Sciences. And so of these courses, we're planning on offering about 45 sections for fall of '23 and then slated to offer about another 45 sections for the spring '24 semester. And so looking at the number of sections that we're offering and potential students, we could be reaching about 1,000 students a semester in the courses that we're planning to offer. And so let's talk a little bit about where we're going. And so we gave a little bit of a picture on the direction that we're trying to go to increase access for students. And so looking at this map, this kind of represents Stanislaus County. And so as we are growing our dual enrollment program and working with the high schools, currently, we're in Aspire Vanguard with a CCAP agreement and offering middle college to Davis High School. But by working with our local partners and growing dual enrollment, we're planning on expanding our CCAP offerings to about 50, I'm sorry, 15 high schools. So those 45 sections represent this variety of high schools that we have listed here. And so it's been said a few times so far that the finding an MJC instructor and sending them to a rural community could present as a barrier. We've talked about offering classes via the Structural Service Agreement. And so we know that there's minimum qualifications that come with that. And not all high school districts have the access to those teachers either. And so by offering the classes online asynchronously, so embedded as a subset of the student's high school day, we are bringing college to them. We're increasing the access and really creating an opportunity for students that may not otherwise access MJC at all. And so just a little bit about what we have been doing with our high schools and where we're going because we've heard feedback from the high schools that our enrollment process can be challenging for students. We've heard that there's a greater need to create a connection with our students early on in the enrollment process by bringing them to campus. And so what we are planning to do is throughout the spring semester, offering what we are calling our MJC Experience Days, where we bring, where we focus on our first-time students that might be graduating high school and coming to MJC while bringing in, under that umbrella, that dual enrollment population. And so we're really trying to revisit how we're offering services to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the high schools and our partners and what they're saying that they need support in. A snapshot of what that really looks like is supporting students through that entire enrollment process. So we're bringing them to campus. They are able to connect with our counselors, our services, our staff. They participate in a campus tour. And then we really move them through the enrollment process. And so we're working with our high school partners to fill in those gaps. Talking about the ruralness of some of our areas, we've tried to find ways to remove those barriers. And so we've heard that transportation can be an issue. And so something else that we're also doing is providing free transportation for the high schools to come to campus. And so in that, what we're really trying to do is ensure that no high school district or student is at a disadvantage. And so if there's a desire or interest in coming to campus and going through those services in that way, we are bringing them to campus while also still providing services out at the high school. So I'm going to give it back to Brian.
So quickly, we have to make sure that as we're expanding this program and growing it, that we have our ducks in a row. And that's the work that we've been doing for the last month or two. We've met with academic senate leaders, talking about dual enrollment. What does that mean? We've met with our YFA leaders. Our deans gave us a bunch of suggestions, logistics. How is this really going to work? And we've worked those into a new agreement. Happy to announce that as of Friday last week, we've come to an understanding with YFA that this is a good thing. We're all on board and moving that forward. And just this week, we're going to now deploy those CCAP agreements to all of our partner districts.
Good evening. Like you heard, my name is Paul Rudehauser. I'm the Director of Secondary Education in Series Unified. So I just wanted to share a little bit about how the pilot is going that we're doing. So it kicked off on January 9th, which was our first day back with students. And we do have students enrolled, double enrolled in a class period during their high school day. So for our purposes, they're enrolled in our college prep US History course, semester two. But they're also at the same time enrolled in MJC's US History 102 course, which overlaps in the same time in US History. So our students are both getting high school as well as college credit at the same time. We have 46 students in this pilot currently who chose to change their schedule mid-year to take part in that. Because it's mid-year, we have a few too many high school teachers doing that. That's okay. We have three high school teachers and then two MJC instructors involved. We have some real celebrations. The first is that the MJC staff and our high school teachers are communicating really well. I would like to say that that's a really important part of this process, is that those groups are willing to talk to each other. And we've had some faculty collaboration time, and it's gone very well so far. We also have students who are learning, right? Which is, of course, the main thing. And learning at high levels. There are, of course, some lessons so far. There are a lot of logistics that just come from, you know, us being a K-12 school district that deals with minors during the school day mostly versus a college situation where you're dealing with basically adults who can make their own schedule. So some of those just happen to be with things like the bookstore, which I think we're going to keep talking about, who is used to selling to individuals rather than districts. And then, of course, the registration process, which is getting much, much better. It's always a challenge, especially when you're dealing with first-generation students who aren't just learning how to enroll in college. And we do have students who are surprised by some of the college expectations. This is one of six classes for them. And we have, we're learning that college instructors sometimes have different expectations even than other college instructors. So we're figuring that out. But overall, we're very happy with how it's going, and we look forward to growing this system in the future.
We'll talk for a minute about next steps and what you can look forward to in the coming months and years. So first, we have this working group that meets about quarterly. The idea there is to, is a group situation to disseminate information that everyone needs to have, all the districts need to have, to share information. So Dr. Rudehauser has shared information about the pilot, what lessons they've been learning, because other districts are going to be on board with this next fall. They want to learn from those lessons so they don't repeat the same mistakes. We also have some outstanding communication occurring at the staff level individually with districts, and that's critical to continue as well. In fact, my recommendation, strong recommendation, is that both things need to happen. You have to have this collective meetings, not frequently, but frequently enough. And you have to have the kind of accessibility that your staff has had to the school districts so that they can get their questions answered, because every school district is different. And every school district is approaching this a little differently, which is part of the challenge, is it's not one or two high school districts you're dealing with, it's over a dozen. And that can make it a little more challenging. So you can expect in the coming months, certainly by April, I would hope, to have these CCAP agreements approved by your high school feeder districts boards. And then, or either before or after, you'll approve them as well. And so that those put in place, what's important about those is they allow exclusivity where you can have a section of students at the junior college that only accepts students from a specific high school, a specific class. You can have this one-to-one relationship. Otherwise, you have to have these classes open to the public, and we don't want that on high school campuses, right? So the CCAP is very, very important to do. You can look forward to the districts and your staff working hard to make sure that all these planned, I think, Angelica said, 45 classes for the fall and another 45 for the spring are implemented. That's big on people's radar right now. School districts are planning for next year already. And then it's not too early, as we go into the spring, to start planning for '24, '25. How are we going to expand this? Bring on additional school districts, additional high schools? And at high schools that already have it, additional courses. The goal is not to have 1,000 students a semester serve. The goal is far higher than that. But going from what you had before, and I don't know what the number was, but I know it was less, to 1,000 potentially next year, each semester, is a huge increase. We want to continue to see those type of huge increases until we're struggling to add more. And I think, Deborah, you're going to take?
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up with a few final thoughts. So I'd like to say that, first of all, I think we've made some outstanding progress. And that is due to the school districts, but also your staff, who's been amazing to work with. They have been receptive. When districts have questions, when they need them there, they've been very supportive. And so I think that will continue to be. I also would like to say that I really, again, appreciate this opportunity. Being a former school superintendent, it's always been about the students for me. Having more students with the opportunity to go through and be successful in dual enrollment will only be better for our community. And I think this is a wonderful thing you and staff are doing. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Quick follow-up points on that. We're confident that the incoming, that the current interim president and the incoming, I haven't had the chance to meet yet, but congratulations, and the incoming president, when you select one, this is going to be a priority for them. And if it's a priority for them, it's important. The, I want to touch, go back off script here for a moment. Communication is so much the key to these things. When they got the high school teachers who were going to be teaching the classes and the junior college professors who are going to be teaching the classes together, a lot of anxiety on the parts of both staffs melted away. When we got people together, and all the districts in the room with JC staff, and we were talking, a lot of the barriers just kind of started melting away. This is a win-win for everybody. There is no reason we can't excel at this. This is, there is no downside to this. There is no loser. It's not a win-win. It's not a win-win-lose thing. It is a win-win-win. The biggest winners, of course, being the students, the high school students and future junior college and college, four-year college students in this county. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, John?
Well, this is exciting. I mean, almost goosebumpy on my arms right now. It's fabulous. And thank you for the work you're doing. It's good to see you guys.
Good to see you.
I miss you. But anyway, just a couple of follow-ups. One is that, that expanding to 15 high schools next year and that need that you expressed for good communication, is this an area where you think we're going to be okay? I mean, or is there someone that is like assigned to a high school? How does a high school feel like we are? It's probably a question for you, you know, we're not going to get missed here somehow because this is, this is new territory and you've got the pilot working, but how will it work with these new high schools?
So currently, what Scott had mentioned is the, the larger group has been meeting quarterly and outside of those quarterly meetings, I either meet with a liaison over dual enrollment, like a position, like Paul's position for Series or superintendents at the local high schools that start working through the facilitation. And then they put me in contact with their main liaison that will be responsible for ensuring that the offerings are at the high school. And so then I meet with them regularly outside of that.
That's great. Now, so the high schools listed here, we'll expect potentially to see C cap agreements coming from each one.
Yes, yes. So we are, now that we've been able to make the final changes to the C cap agreement, we'll start moving those through our, it'll come to the board for review and it'll go to the high school districts for approval. And once the districts have approved them, we'll move through the actual signature and approval process.
Okay, and this might be for Dr. Sanders. The next question is just bullet points really quick. What are the essential elements of that C cap agreement and what are the barriers?
Well, it's a 27-page document. So let's see, which are the highlights?
Essential elements that.
Essential elements is that we're going to provide courses that are close to the public. It's going to be taught by someone who meets the minimum qualifications in our subjects. The goal is to have students start either a general education pathway or a CTE career pathway and actually become an MJC student or become a Columbia College student and then proceed on after graduation into our institution. Or the courses that they take will also be transferable to wherever they need to go in the state.
And barriers?
Barriers, you ask about liaison, that's going to be important. The conversation is going to be important. There will be bumps in the road. There's going to be miscommunications and things. This is a large group of people coming together who've never done this before on both sides. So if we get rigid about it, it's going to be difficult. If we could maintain flexibility and we unify behind what we need to do, then I think we're going to be much more successful.
Chancellor Young, I want to compliment you for hiring these consultants. I mean, this is a need that Trustee Aguilar and I identified. Dr. Sanders, you and Ms. Guzman, and Dr. Wilson, great job. And my only question would be is what can we as trustees do to help you? Because I think this is something that really goes to the crust of what MJC and Columbia College are all about, giving people opportunities.
Yeah, continue to support the initiative. The proposals are going to come through here. Right now, I think the hardest work has been done in terms of making sure that we have ourselves on the same page or what those are going to look like, your support in that. And then you are out in the community and you're in different areas of the community. So please talk to the school teachers that you know, talk to the representatives and the people elected to represent these various different school districts and talk to them about the importance of this as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jenny?
I have four questions. Number one, who wrote the goal in the master agreement?
It was a collective effort. But it was something that we synthesized in those meetings that these folks arranged.
Okay. In terms of the pie chart, the spectrum of offerings, I want to be clear, is that a desire for subject areas or current offerings? And then also, who completed, if it was a desire, who completed that survey?
So the spectrum of offerings is based on the requests from the high schools. So based on each high school district, we worked on what the ID and intent behind offering the courses. So they're following patterns that meet general education requirements essentially, like the CSU or UCGE breadth. So all the courses that we're offering will meet general education.
Superintendent, principal, high school teachers, who completed that survey?
It's a variety. So it's a combination of superintendents, high school principal, high school counselors. Most of the high schools worked on the side with a subset of their own team and then they worked to report that information back to myself.
Awesome. In terms of the pilot in Series, the three high school teachers and two MJC instructors, do they share the same minimum qualifications and degrees?
No, they don't. I don't know the qualifications of the high school teachers. They're certainly qualified to teach the high school history class, but that's the good thing about the embedded model in that it's our course being taught by one of our instructors who meets our qualifications and it doesn't rely on someone at the high school also meeting our qualifications.
Okay.
Expand on that just for a moment, just to make sure it's clear what that model looks like. It is a, you have the college course as if students were accessing it embedded online asynchronously, but with a high school teacher guiding the students through the different components of the class. So it's, there's two teachers. There's a junior college teacher and a credentialed high school teacher who's not, doesn't meet the requirements necessarily to teach JC class, but is a credentialed teacher.
That's very helpful.
Every student has a person watching over them as they go through the college class.
Okay, so I'm going to ask this last question, although I think you just answered it and I'll give you a chance to say it differently. How do you ensure the training and verification that these courses are hitting the key objectives of the courses and the objectives we would have here?
Sure. The courses, the online class is one of your online classes. It looks no different. The curriculum is no different than your online classes offered to your non-high school age students.
In the past, students at the high school level could enroll for one of your classes. It could be in a room with a high school teacher that did not have subject matter. There might be 10 kids taking 10 different classes, exaggeration. But the adult that would be in there at that time would be just overseeing for behavior. Now you have a high school teacher that is credentialed and teaches that content matter.
And I would just add that one of the things that we were working out for the last couple of weeks was exactly that. How do we maintain quality control for our college classes that are going to be taught under the Instructional Services Agreement? So there's going to be those, a training program to make sure they know what the expectations are, how do they get grades into our system, orientation, college expectations. We're going to put that together now. We're getting a subset of folks together from Academic Senate and the YFA to make sure that we have a good training program for them to be successful and then a quality control assessment along the way.
Is there any kind of orientation for students going in? I mean, I know they come to our campus and they have that day, but he mentioned at Series, there was the issue with surprised by the college level expectations. Do we have a mechanism to?
So I think.
Make that ahead of time?
This is one of those areas where we are moving into new territory with our high school partners. And so with the pilot, because it's only Series in Central Valley, it was easy to facilitate and work with their current, the college and career, their college and career directors. And so by working with them, they've identified the students and we work with them to say, okay, these are your expectations, this, what it, this is what it means to be in the class. And so it's now, how do we scale that to the other high schools?
It seems like a party up here. I thought I'd join over.
Why not?
Yeah. I just want to say that our vision for next year, as we go into the fall, remember that high schools generally start earlier than Modesto Junior College does. We plan to take especially those first few weeks of school and really do a lot of that orientation that you're talking about also.
Awesome. Thank you.
Madam President. So are these online classes or onsite classes?
Majority of them are online classes embedded. Probably 25%, 25% to 30% are in-person classes.
Okay. If you could, explain to me if there are any differences between the qualifications to teach CTE versus general ed?
Yeah, that's an interesting point. I don't know what the high school qualifications are for CTE.
I'm only interested in, in the C cap, these college offerings.
The college offerings, a CTE field is an associate degree plus six years of experience. Now, when you're teaching at the high school, you're certified, generally have a bachelor's degree, so you're more than certified to teach those classes. We actually see a lot more opportunity for Instructional Service Agreement amongst the CTE fields and then feeding directly into our programs here.
And general ed?
General education is a master's degree for us in whatever the subject matter is. And when you're teaching at the high school, it's your single subject credential in that field.
So would it be fair to say that when you're talking about the total number of dual enrollment students statewide, you need to break that down in the relevant areas and talk about CTE versus general ed? Would that be fair?
That is fair. And that was the model that I showed briefly.
Right. So getting back to 1,000 students, what would that look like from a FTE number, just roughly?
300?
300 FTEs. So if we're looking at potentially dropping from a 16,500 FTE district down to a 14,500 FTE district, would it be fair to say that we need to do everything we can to capture FTEs? And would it also be fair to say that if that means that we need to make up for faculty load and put them at the high schools to make that up, would that be a good direction to take?
This is an important part of the spectrum of our offerings going into the future. I hesitate to look at any instructor and say, I'm going to send you to the high school to teach over there, because it's a very nuanced learning environment. So we need to make sure we get a successful folks.
Could I, it could either be, now that technology is ramping up, it could either be face-to-face or it could be online. And it could make. Right, right.
And you've used the term asynchronous. Could you just give me the 30-second definition of that?
Sure. Your typical asynchronous history class would be a student sitting in their pajamas at about 2:00 in the morning and reading online materials, watching some videos and doing readings, writing papers and responding to prompts from their instructor. We've replaced that with five days a week from 9:00 to 10:00 with a certificated high school teacher where they're going to be pressing through that material.
So the high school teacher say, hey, it's time for lesson, unit one, lesson three, let's go pull that from the library that the MJC professor has taught and has recorded and saved. And now for that student, that's where I am in the sequence of the course. Okay.
Well, the pajama day in the high school, it happens.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Ball.
All right, thank you very much.
Lastly, other question?
There's one more question, folks.
Hi, sorry I'm online. I just have a question. Is this going to be open at all to our private schools who maybe have students that want to do dual enrollment?
It certainly could be. There's no, there's no area I'm aware of that would prevent that.
Okay, thank you.
My bad.
The current, the C cap agreement under state law, Nancy, Trustee Hinton, AB 288 allows us to do dual enrollment agreements with public schools, with county offices of education, and it's really limited to those right now. Any student can do dual enrollment independently though. So all the students from private schools can take additional classes with us and we'd be happy to meet with folks at these schools and do something that is C cap-like that we could probably arrange there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, next we have 6.2, a presentation on the Modesto Junior College Bus Pass Program. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here to give an update on the Bus Pass Program. I believe it was at the request of Trustee Garrett and some accommodation information that I think Trustee Hinton had requested regarding the Bus Pass Program at MJC.
Yes, thank you. I'm not hearing the presentation.
It hadn't started yet, Nancy.
Okay.
So I'm going to give you some history information about the Bus Pass Program to kind of give you where it was and where it is today and then what we're planning later. But the prior contract history and reviewing that, the immediate concerns, and I wasn't involved in the prior MOUs except for the last one, is the concerns that there's a lack of marketing promotion and promotion related to MJC and Stan RTA. The MOU was outdated. Some of the observations from the 2017 to 2021 contract was that MJC's costs increased annually since inception, but obviously due to pandemic, the numbers significantly declined. But our costs did not change. So MJC absolutely did take a hit. So in that hit for year 2017 to 2019, it was 160K flat rate for the year and the total ridership was just over 460,000. And that was between two systems, which I'll talk about in a moment. And then 2019 to 2021, it was a $220,000, $220,000 flat rate. But you can see that was the pandemic time. So there were significant increases in ridership and cost. So although it was a $60,000 increase, that was 37% more than what was previously paid. But the ridership itself, 68% decreased total. So although we were still paying at the regular rate, the ridership has significantly dropped and obviously it was a pandemic, so no one was riding the bus. And then we have a new MOU for 2022. So this summer, I had the opportunity to meet with representatives from Stan RTA to talk about our goals at MJC for a new MOU moving forward, because our MOU had been outdated. And the conversation related to number one, strengthening our partnership for a planned increase, because we knew this fall that we were opening up more classes in person. So obviously ridership would be up this fall with more classes in person. I'm doing a joint promotion between Student Services during the first week to improve awareness of bus routes. And Stan RTA actually came and had a booth at our welcome day. They probably gave out the most gifts and prizes and supplies to our students, but really strengthened that partnership. Exploring other options to co-promote bus ridership throughout the business community with the ID and Bus Pass, working with our Public Relations Department. So they've been working with our Public Relations Department regarding trying to design some more brochures and also a conversation regarding surveying our students about, about their transportation with Stan RTA. And so from that, this just gives you a brief synopsis of each MOU that previously existed. So again, 2017 to 2019, 160K per year, 100,000 went to the city, 60,000 went to the county. In 2019 to 2022, again, $220,000 per year, 150,000 went to the city and 70,000 went to the county. And then there was a, there was a merger between the two systems, which I'll share momentarily. But for this current year, we're only paying $125,000 for the year with Stan RTA. And part of that conversation this summer was because utilization obviously went down, but we knew it was going to be a change this fall because, because more classes would be in person. And then we will come back to the table this summer to talk about what it would look like moving forward. So 2017 to 2021, two different systems, the MAX system and the START system totally separated. So you can see the progression from 2017, 2018, where ridership for MAX was at 141,000 plus, and then pandemic time dropped to 12,000, so significant drop. And then the START system, same thing, 104,000, 104,000 at the height and then dropping down to less than 2,000 people. So obviously the pandemic had a huge piece in this drop in ridership. So Stan RTA formed a regional transit system branded the S in July 2021. And so that was a merger between MAX and START. So what we have here is the ridership for 2022. And for spring and summer, which is circled in the red, for those eight months combined for spring and summer, it was just over 23,000 students who rode the service. However, the four months of this fall, where again, we're back in person, more and more in-person classes, it's over 30,000 students. And it's, and I put 30,000, 37 plus, because some of the days in August are in the semester. And at the time of this report, Stan RTA didn't have all the December numbers, but it did. additionally, they also give part of December free ridership as well. So again, these four months have been significant over the last eight, because we have more in-class, more in-person classes. But bottom line is, we had clearly over thirty thousand students for this fall semester. So for Bus Pass access, the students who actually need the Bus Pass, who actually need Bus Passes have to physically come into, come to MJC and either go to the kiosk for Business Services to get the Bus Pass. And we have a very archaic system where they literally have to get a sticker that goes on the back of their ID cards every semester to have a Bus Pass. Knock on wood, we're trying to go towards having ideally an ID card that can scan, make our lives much easier in so many ways. But right now, every semester, a student who needs a Bus Pass must physically come on campus to get this sticker to go into the back of their ID card. And this is what they show to the transit drivers that shows that they are eligible for this semester for the Bus Pass. For disabled student needs, there is the man response services specifically with Stan RTA. But regardless of that, all transportation services are equipped, are equipped with wheelchair accessibility. So regardless, all of the systems that they have provides ADA accessibility. But there's two services that are also provided that are, again, not covered in our MOU, which is the ADA paratransit and the Dial-A-Ride. So right now, and I'll show you the grid that kind of breaks down, that breaks down that cost, but it's about two dollars and fifty cents a ride if they use this back and forth. And again, it's for students who, if you see under ADA paratransit, what I have underlined is available to individuals with disabilities that prevent them from using fixed route buses. And they also have to become certified to use that service, and I'll show you that process momentarily. So for the fixed rights, for the fixed route service, you can see on the left, and this is on their website, it says, "MJC students with ID and current semester sticker is free", and that is what they pay. At the bottom, underlined in green, "Personal disabilities have an opportunity to apply for a discount card." So a monthly rate, if a student was not an MJC student and they're paying a thirty-one day Bus Pass, they're paying forty dollars a month, which will cost our students about a hundred and sixty dollars per semester to utilize the bus service. And we are, what we're paying right now is nickels on the dime compared to that. But those students with disabilities who opt to utilize the ADA paratransit or the Dial-A-Ride, this application on the right is what they must complete. And again, it says, "Have a disability that makes riding the fixed route service extremely difficult." And if they're unable to do a route, a fixed route due to disability, they might be eligible for paratransit, and this is the door-to-door service. So it's a luxury service if you cannot get to the fixed route service. However, students in extreme circumstances, if they go to our Accommodation Support Center and on a case-by-case basis, they can submit a, a grant opportunity for that student for the semester. So in extreme cases, again, case-by-case basis, if a student goes in, they're not giving example, if a student, for example, broke their leg, and for them to get from their front door to the bus route, obviously, that is something that's extremely difficult unless you're mobile and have a wheelchair motorized, you can get from point A to point B, just as you would get from one part of the campus to the other part of the campus. But a crutch is something very different. That may be an opportunity where Accommodation Support Center may look into an opportunity for a grant opportunity for that period. And that thirty-one day pass for disabled is half the cost, which is about twenty dollars a month for students as well. So again, ASC will make that accommodation on a case-by-case basis for students.
To interrupt for just a second, do you know how many students would need the Dial-A-Ride services?
No, accommodations, ASC would have to provide that information if they're going to them, if there is a need and they're going to them on a case-by-case basis.
So we've never tried to get an MOU that includes, we haven't done the research or-
No, so the MOU that we have right now, again, is for one year. We can have that conversation when we talk with them in the summer regarding ridership and what that could look like, but it probably would be pennies on the dollar. And again, I think for that particular group, they still should go through ASC so we know we're doing it on an individual basis versus a flat rate, because we don't know how many people are utilizing it.
Madam President, Dr. Wilson, this is a really good night for you, and I'm pleased that Student Affairs is under your direction. I think you're doing some really good things. But I, I do think there is a, a need to maybe expand that Dial-A-Ride a little bit for our handicapped students, and I wonder if maybe you could explore as you renegotiate, see if you can do a little better price for that, because I do think that's a underserved population, and I think there's some people that need help, and I'd like to see that. But this, like the dual enrollment, is a really good program, and you're to be commended, you and your staff.
Thank you. So again, we can talk about this in the next round of negotiations, or again, going through the ASC where we, then we're documenting exactly the number of students who are accessing the service, who need that more detailed service. Because really, when it comes to ADA, legally, it's to provide reasonable accommodations. And Stan RTA, because they provide that service, is a reasonable accommodation. So an able-bodied student can come with the argument as if we're providing MAX service, then why don't we provide Uber for students? So being prepared for that as well.
Madam President, if I may, you can see how long we've had this program in existence, and, and I want to thank you for coming here tonight since I requested this item. This is the first real in-depth report we've got on this program since, since it was implemented. So I want to thank you for that. And, and as Dr. Richard said, thank your staff as well. I think there's federal, maybe even state dollars and whatnot that we could be accessing. And as you pointed out, it's all about marketing, and, and that's part of the marketing process is see what additional funds are available to address the needs of our disabled students, whether it be permanent or temporary, and seeing if we can come up with, with a contract that, that meets their, meets their needs. Because, you know, my mom went to MJC a long time ago, and there was actually dedicated buses that went to the outlying areas of the county. You know, it was, it was morning and afternoon. So you can go in in the morning, and then by the afternoon, they brought you back. So I know all those times have changed, but I think as we're looking to expand services, as you talked about, and, and expand access for, for students that live in those outlying areas, whose first-time college students, families that are disadvantaged financially, anything we can do to, to expand access and opportunity for students in their higher education goals is what we should be focused on. And I also want to point out, the main reason why I brought this presentation is because last month, it was reported that we voted against the Bus Pass program. And as you can see, that this program has been in, in place since 2017 and has served thousands upon thousands of students. So we should be applauding our accomplishments. We should be applauding, providing access to students. But I will not tolerate misinformation out there in the public arena that says we don't care about students. And, and I want to applaud you and your staff for taking care of our students. And that one thing we could do maybe is to, when disabled students, whether permanent or temporary, come in to enroll, make this part of the, you know, process. Provide them the forms, sit down with them, whatever we need to do, we could include that in the, in the process. But again, I want to thank you for coming here tonight, and, and you and your staff are to be immensely congratulated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Nancy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was trying to get the mute off. Sorry about that.
Okay.
And sorry I'm there in person. But Dr. Wilson, you answered perfectly the question that I had, and I applaud you as trustee Garrett said, and look forward to possibly doing the further research with the people down at the bus area with the, probably the county now, and seeing that we can get people around the county to be able to come in and also those that need the special paratransit and Dial-A-Ride. So thank you for what you're doing. I'm glad that there is a place that they can go if they have an urgent need for it now, so that they can continue class.
Absolutely. And just based on, just based on the conversations here, more likely than not, if we're able to make, to negotiate, just as students right now go to the kiosk or Business Services for that Bus Pass sticker, and again, hopefully, we can get away from the Bus Pass archaic practice, which is a thorn in my side. But hopefully, like for those students who need a specific sticker for that, would absolutely have to go through ASC, so we know that we're, again, documenting who those students are and capturing those numbers specifically to come back. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up is six point three, presentation, Columbia College and Modesto Junior College Career Technical Education and Workforce Development Programs. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Excited to be here today, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Young, President Redwin, President Tran. We appreciate the opportunity to present in the month of February. As you may know, the month of February is National CTE Month. So it seems like every year we come back in February, and it's a nice routine and tradition for us. Joining me today is Dean Steve Amador from Columbia College, also Tim Truax, one of our instructors from agriculture at Modesto Junior College, Shane Warner and Andrew Van Hoogmold, fire technology instructors at Columbia College. And I'd like to say that CTE is alive and well through the shepherd efforts of our instructors that oversee program areas in agriculture, business and computing, industry and trade, health, and public safety. Going to try to move this forward. There we go. So we're going to take a little presentation from a high lens and then bring it into more specific program Eric presentations. So this particular slide gives us information about how CTE exists in our district, in our colleges. And one thing that I'd like to note is fifty, about fifty percent of our students, roughly a little bit over fifty percent of our students, take at least one CTE class every year. That's nearly fifteen thousand students. So I'd like to remind the board and the audience that that is a large impact of our students attending both MJC and Columbia College. We also hear about how is CTE out there in the community? And so this particular slide is an example of Modesto Junior College CTE and Workforce Development Programs out in the community. We have efforts like the automotive Modesto Subaru U program that recently is being launched for the spring. We presently have a dental assisting program where we're collaborating with San Marcos County Office of Education and the San Marcos Workforce Development Effort in bridging together resources to bring back dental assisting as an effort. We also have been out in front at, in series with a variety of different adult education partnerships that bring about forklift, general manufacturing practices, culinary arts, food truck training, as well as phlebotomy. And then we also have efforts in the community with respects to human services and behavioral health certificates, as well as confined space training out in the West Side. I'm going to hand the baton next to Dean Amador to speak a little bit more about Strong Workforce and Perkins.
Thank you, Pedro. I'd like to piggyback a little bit on what Pedro had to say, and it is a great time to be in the CTE business. Thirty years ago, when I started in this profession, that was not the case. I heard the term earlier in a discussion of the redhead stepchild, and that's kind of how I felt when I started in this profession, and that is no longer the case. We, I think about ten years ago, we saw, I personally saw the tide start to change. Funding sources became more available, and our society really took a step back and said, you know what, for our economy to thrive, we need to train people, we need to put them to work, and we need to pay them a living wage. And so the tides have changed. We have a couple of funding sources that are helping driving this situation. One's Carl Perkins started early sixties, and, and it kind of helped us get programs going and, and keep things running, kind of a maintenance type of thing. I really started to see change when Strong Workforce kicked in in 2016, and Strong Workforce is a state-funded program that is much more substantial than Perkins dollar-wise. And so they have a simple motto, and the simple motto is more better CTE. And that means more students, more programs, more graduates. And we begin to thrive. In this next slide, we have a bunch of programs that we are currently working with Perkins and Strong Workforce. Rather than read all of this to you, I'm going to encourage you to, next time you're at Columbia College, visit the culinary kitchen, look at those facilities, look at that program. Next time you're out on this campus, take a look at the irrigation unit. That was built with a lot of Strong Workforce money. Next time you're by the sheep unit, stop by, see Mr. Truax with his small animal, small ruminant animal reproductive program that he's going to talk to you about right now.
Thank you, Steve. My name's Tim Truax. I'm an animal science instructor, was hired just recently. This is my, my two-year anniversary here at the college, and so I loved the students and what I've had a chance to do. As part of my, my teaching load, I guess you could say, I also oversee two instructional, you know, laboratories on campus, one being the sheep unit and one being the poultry unit, many of you of, which have enjoyed our eggs, I think, recently that we've been able to, to provide you. But through Perkins and Strong Workforce funding, we've been able to expand the sheep unit in what we call really the small ruminant program in many different ways. Anytime we refer to a small ruminant, it would be a sheep or a goat, and if you turn back the clock thirty years, this wouldn't be relevant. But now it is. And, and I guess what, what's going to go hand in hand with the next speaker is fire prevention, ways that we've been able to utilize sheep and goats for that. And so when we have a species in agriculture that becomes popular, there's many opportunities for students that arise. And one of those would be the reproduction facet of this. So looking at the slide, I understand that you won't use many of these terms around the dinner table when you're with your children, but in animal agriculture, these are terms that are used quite often. And so through utilizing these funds, we are able to expand and diversify the species that we expose students to, and one of those being introducing goats on campus. So now, when a student takes a small ruminant science course, they're also going to learn about goat management and production techniques. And so I was going to bring students with me right now. We have a few that are kidding or, or having babies, and so those students are tied up there. So it's alive and well, and we're expanding and growing. But we also have many alumni that currently work in the reproduction fields, and that's really what this money is, is focused towards, because there's growing opportunities for students. And, you know, the term with this funding is new and better, bigger and better, and this fits the bill. And so something that's attractive for students is going to be able to work with several reproductive companies that we currently already work with, but now we're looking forward to providing partnerships that we can have students employed there moving forward, and we can capitalize on previous relationships that we have. But those are some pictures that are showing this money at work and what we've been able to implement in the last year. This is a two-year project, and so through some of the equipment that we're working on purchasing, some that's already arrived, this is a, some, some coursework and an idea that's very attractive to students, and so a program that we expect to grow pretty heavily moving forward. So with that said, I'd like to call up Shane Warner to discuss Columbia and the Fire Science Program.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about, we have five different categories here, and I'd like to refer to the slide up here that's, that's up here currently, and talk a little bit about recruitment enrollment. One of the things about recruitment for the Fire Academy that's really important is that we recruit through our local high schools. And one of the, one of the things that we do is a pre-apprenticeship program, getting them early in the seventh and eighth grade type years. And we really push through that the C cap classes with those high school service areas. So that is one way that we are recruiting. Couple more, we do want to say, under that recruitment category is we, we do have and promote degree completion. That's very important later on in a fire service when these fire- That's very important later on in a fire service when these firefighters get to be company officers. So we try and get them early and, and keep them for a couple, two year degrees. And then we hopefully can get them jobs with seasonal employment. We also have a strong relationship with our agency partners up in Topeka County, as well as Calaveras and even Stanislaus County and even Mariposa County. Enrollment our, in our Fire Academy currently has been full with waiting lists. We were challenged, as all of us were in the educational field with COVID. COVID was a, you know, a nightmare for all of us, but we continued on through the approval of state fire training that governs us as a body with Columbia College. And they were actually able to work a deal where we could have, you know, the distance learning as well as meeting Zoom. But then also we were face to face with masks on as well through that process. Next item up there, the bullet point up there is agency partnerships. We have several fire agencies in Topeka County and we work with just about 11 of them just in Topeka County, as well as outside counties. Recruitment's for students and employment before they graduate the Fire Academy is, is really important because we, we try and place these people in areas where they can be hopefully getting, gain full employment. One of the other things that we wanted to say is that we have about a 75% success rate for those that really push themselves to get into the fire service because of the need of firefighters right now. One of the other things that I wanted to mention is where are they going? What are they doing? Forest Service, CAL FIRE and local fire agencies in Topeka County will put these people to work. A lot more opportunities now than when I got in the fire service. Wouldn't be able to host a current Fire Academy with our outer agency partners and training locations. As you can see here, every one of those training locations, except for the, the one at the very top of the ladders is, is at our, our community college at Columbia, the rest are off site. Some of the, the next bullet point there that I'd like to introduce is the safety equipment. We wouldn't be able to operate our Fire Academy without the strong workforce money that we have been given. And the purchases that we've made with those are such as ladders that you can see the students throwing in that, in that slide. We purchased nozzles and hoses, purchased lighting equipment, wildland personal protective equipment and storage containers for storage of our equipment. Right now currently going through a re accreditation process. This is about a five year process. Every five years we go through this. And what the state has us do is they go through and ask us for a self assessment report. The self assessment report reflects everything that we do with inside that Fire Academy. And then they give us the approval, whether it's a yes or no. We've been approved for another five years upon completion of this site visit that's going to be coming up. They're coming here in spring of 23. They're going to do, they're, we're supposed to be giving them their, their, their self assessment report. And then they will be visiting our college in September to do the onsite walkthrough. This process is very lengthy. And what hinges on this is about 10 years ago, 12 years ago, we weren't accredited. And every agency now out there has to have accredited Fire Academy students coming to work for them. Because what happens is if they want to go seek employment outside California, if they don't have an IFSAAC and PRO Board certification, they won't be able to seek that employment. So the vision I have is if you look at the bottom right hand corner of the screen there, there's a tower there. That's that Sierra Conservation Center where we currently train our young firefighters. Importance of the slideshow is to show the board how critical this is to the Fire Academy program. We need to build a tower on our campus at Columbia so we can have our own facility. Last time the accreditation team came out, they noted that there was, they weren't real happy with the on time, the basically the travel time from the college to the facilities that we were attending. They were concerned because they were off campus and they had basically cut into instruction time. I believe over the past few years, we've made the Chancellor's office and Columbia College President office aware of the importance of a training facility that includes a tower we constructed on our Columbia College campus. So we can have a classroom, storage and a training tower to keep the, the upward trend, excuse me, of students coming to Columbia Fire Academy and beyond. This has been a vision for a lot of my predecessors, all the way back into the early 80s when I went to school there. I'd like to invite all of you early in the afternoon of April 27th. We haven't decided a time yet, but it'll be in Carke Park for anybody that would like to attend our Fire Academy graduation. I was only given three minutes and I hope I did okay. If there's any questions. I was trying to get through that quickly, so pardon me if I spoke fast. Is there any questions from the board at this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And once again, we're just going to thank you again for the opportunity to present. And we're going to ask if there was any questions. Projects? Yes.
So at Columbia, I'm wondering, is the child development program, is it not a part of the Strong Workforce order? We just left it off for what?
Yes, no, we, these were just samplings of different.
Oh, okay, because I've got an invitation to the fundraiser up there and I go, what, what, where is it? It's not here, okay. So it's just a sampling. Okay. The other, but the question I have, you received a little document earlier from one of our presenters on the Stanislaus Workforce Development 2030? No. That little booklet. Were you involved in that, a part of the working group? Because there's interesting data provided on what are the workforce needs? And then what are the educational outputs? And where there are maybe some opportunities that are listed there. How, how were you involved with that?
Absolutely. I, I've been involved in a couple of the leadership committees.
Yes, the investment blueprint.
Pleasure of serving was one of the board members. The thematic around 2030 is the biomanufacturing structure and the ability to focus on the ecosystem of this community. For us as a campus, that's an integration of industrial technology, engineering, agriculture, reshaping how we may think about collaborating together as different programmers.
Well, I mean, as the, as the workforce needs are presented and, and the higher paying, you know, careers that are out there and, and is our approach to CTE, I don't maximize, right? To put, set kids up for, or set students up, I should say, for good futures, right? Good careers and, and are we headed in that direction with CTE? With the right course, or excuse me, CTE pathways that lead to those different industry sectors that, that are identified, say, in, in that study and others?
I think we are. I think there's adjustments as you're always having to reanalyze and re pivot those adjustments. Thematically, right now, we're investing heavily into industrial arts and vessel technology equipment.
There'll certainly be needs there, no doubt.
Robotics, automation is kind of the theme. And we're seeing the blending of computer science with engineering, with industrial arts. It's going to, it's going to be a reevaluation of those programs. And I know our vice president has been very interested in seeing us kind of develop and evolve. And our faculty are working in those areas. It's just going to be the integration of those disciplines and working with the community. Working with the community is a, is a big part. We have some good investments happening in the community. And how do we align that work and how do we reshift that target so that students see opportunities in these fields?
Any other questions or comments?
Very much.
Thank you. All right, 6.4 is the COVID-19 Emergency Conditions Recovery Plan Midyear Update. Is this a presentation or? Information?
It, it is a report that you are to review.
We saw it.
Wonderful. So if you have questions, we can respond to those. It's part of our requirements for receiving the emergency conditions. And so are you receiving it the second time? Again, we started it, I believe in August and now a second review in February.
Okay, are there any comments or questions on that? No? Mine is marked up, I read it. All right. So let us go on to the association reports. I may take these out of order. Let's start though with Student Senate Activity Reports. We have Caitlin Gross, ASMJC President. Hello again.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. I'm very happy to see you all this evening. Here's my report for ASMJC. As the semester is up and running, ASMJC has been staying very busy. On January 25th and 26th, ASMJC hosted Club Rush on both, both east and west campuses. College isn't just about academics. It's also about the fun you can have while connecting with new friends. And clubs are the perfect place to start. During Club Rush, we had over 20 clubs in the Quad and MSR building. Food was provided for everyone in attendance and ASMJC had DJ there too. In the beginning of the year, campus life started with 14 clubs and now have over 20. Over the course of February, ASMJC has been celebrating Black History Month by hosting weekly events such as Voices of Black Women, I Am Black Before I'm an Athlete, Spoken Word, Poetry and Open Mic. These were all successful and empowering events. Later this month, we are continuing the events with Let's Talk 1619 Project, I Work, Do It For The Culture and African American Education Conference on February 24th. Currently ASMJC is holding elections for next year. Applications are open until February 24th and election results will be announced on April 5th. ASMJC hopes that everyone has had a great start to the semester. Finally, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees, Trustees and Chancellor Young, as well as all the people who participate in this meeting. That concludes my report. Please let me know if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? All right. So next up, I will call, I'm afraid of pronouncing this wrong, Zie Harmon.
You got it.
I think you got it.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Young, College Presidents and Attendees. Happy Valentine's Day from the ASCC. In the months since I spoke to you all, things have been quite busy at Columbia. As the semester has kicked back into full swing, we have continued our work sitting on important committees such as the Educational Master Plan Steering Committee, while working alongside clubs to co sponsor events like Cupid's Bash with our Breakfast Club. We are also conducting a student climate survey with the intention of a yearly spring survey to gauge student wants, needs, issues and concerns. The survey will open this week and close at the beginning of March. It will serve us in giving representative feedback on college, or to college administrators and committees. ASCC has also identified our delegate to the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, Vice President Ashley Escalera, in order to participate at this semester's General Assembly and have Columbia's student voices heard on the state level. However, as we aim to be heard at the state level, another issue must be addressed, being heard on a district level. I have been privileged to be a part of ASCC since spring of 21. In my time with this organization, I have been asked to give a student's perspective on many issues. From the fate of Columbia's on campus bookstore to the question of mask versus testing versus vaccine mandates, to the question of how we can make Columbia better, more enjoyable, more appealing to a student. While these issues have been resolved on paper, they have also opened up an unexpected can of worms. Where will students purchase school supplies or Columbia spirit wear or pick up their textbooks? How can we guarantee the health and safety of all of our students, including immunocompromised or vulnerable to the rapid evolution of COVID-19? When the position of Health Coordinator has been vacant since Lorene Campana retired at the end of last academic year? How can we live up to the mission statement of inspiring students to become inquisitive, creative and thoughtful lifelong learners like our mission statement says? When year after year, Columbia is struggling to fill vital positions on campus? The Columbia College Academic Senate has identified 12 vacant faculty positions on campus in the fall semester. From biology to English as a second language, to humanities, to the various creative and performance arts. Yet Columbia has only been given clearance to hire half of that number. That is not to mention the other non-faculty positions that are currently vacant. Imagine the frustration of students who are told less than a week before the start of the semester that their class has been canceled because there is no faculty to teach it. And this was one of the final courses they needed for graduation. Or being a creative in the motherload and finding out that Columbia's formerly robust theater and studio arts programs are borderline nonexistent. A shell of a once vibrant arts community. Year after year, I have seen MJC been held up as an example to Columbia of what to strive for. While their own internal problems are brushed under the rug until it creates an avoidable eruption of resentment akin to what we saw at last month's meeting. This is not meant to be critical of MJC. They are a metropolitan school with a big population, big school, big problems. But let me be clear. What works for MJC does not always work for Columbia. We are different schools with different demographics, with different surrounding environments, with different problems. I'm calling on the Board of Trustees to recognize those differences not as challenges, but as opportunities to find creative and innovative solutions. However, only four board meetings a year are held at Columbia College, while eight meetings are held here in Modesto. This effectively silences our college community to a few trusted delegates. People like myself, like Academic Senate President Lana Von Eppes, and like College President Dr. Lena Tran. In the next academic year, the position of YCCD Student Trustee will pass to Columbia. I hope that by having a Columbia student in this role next year, some of these issues that I have identified tonight will be solved with the aid of our Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and I look forward to reporting back again in March. Thank you.
Fantastic. I would just like to ask in the future that we have an update on where technology stands. I know it's hard for the public to join any of those meetings. And in the example of today's student trustee and a board trustee member who is joining by Zoom, that's not the case up there. So absolutely hear you. I appreciate the comments that you brought forward and to whomever should give a report on technology in the future, I'd like to receive that.
Thank you very much. Next, I'm going to ask up Jacqueline Fort speaking for Gillian Daley. LTAC.
Well, hello everyone. And our Chancellor Young and our President, I am Jacqueline Forte and I'm here to present to you a brief report from LTAC. So first I want to start off by sharing with you our leadership team results. We have Samantha McCarthy is our new treasurer and Kelly Thomas will be our new recorder. And Martha Robles is our new member at large. Finally, I want to share with you that Yolanda will be replacing Vicky Mulvaney-TRASK and team me with Beth on the Special Benefits Committee. And so we also want to take this time to thank Vicky for all of her contributions. Secondly, on behalf of the leadership team, we would like to acknowledge the district and MJC college leadership who pulled together on all sides to support students during the gas leak incident on the west campus. Judy Lancaster and Yolanda and their team for their quick response and keeping the executive team informed. Want to thank Dr. Sarah Schrader for chairing the EOC and bringing everyone together for updates. And Jeanette Fontana for providing regular updates to students on various communication, using various communication modalities. Also want to take this time to thank all of the vice presidents, Dr. Andrea Wilson for leading her team to shift locations as needed to continue, continue with offering student support services and resources. Dr. Brian Sanders for his leadership regarding the weak and keeping deans and others informed for communicating frequent updates. And Dr. Sarah Schrader for thinking outside of the box and working to provide students and staff access to hot food on web on the west campus with that delicious taco truck. Also want to thank the MJC deans for working together across both campuses to accommodate needs, to work with faculty to transition modality as needed and for working with their teams to continue to offer uninterrupted instruction. Thirdly, I would like to share a reclassification update from LTAC. We're glad to see the year one leadership team district initiate reclassification results on the board agenda for approval tonight. President Gillian, Gillian Daley and Vice President Steve Amador will be meeting with the consultants and Trevor Albertson to review recommendations for moving forward in the process for years two through five. We are already more than halfway into year two and we look forward to getting this process. and we look forward to getting this process back on track. Also want to mention items that the leadership is working on. We are putting together a mentor program for leaders, and we are hoping to provide a report to this board very soon. And we are also doing a short review of the Leadership Handbook just to make sure everything is up to date. And finally, to conclude our report, we want to congratulate Dr. Chad Redwing on his new role. We, the leadership team, are so excited for you in this position, and we look forward to meeting with you. That's it. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have President Aisha Saleh. Please say your last name for me. Sala.
Anything remotely close will get me to stand up and come forward. Thank you. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Chair Beggs, Trustees, Chancellor Young, thank you for your time today. I'd like to begin by welcoming Dr. Redwing in his new role as interim president of MJC. I've received an outpouring of appreciation and positivity from faculty on your selection, so I want to pass that on to you here. I look forward to him guiding the college through this period of transition. As a faculty member, he was always wonderful at bringing people together and connecting our community, which is a skill set that will serve him very well as our interim president. Faculty are making progress on the planning for our Professional Development Institute this August. The Faculty Professional Development Committee will be reaching out to faculty soon for broader involvement and discussing their plan in Senate. I'd like to give a special thanks to Chancellor Young for his support of faculty and his recognition of the importance of bringing back the tradition of investing in faculty through professional development retreats. Thank you for that support. Dean Guzman and I have been working on our audit, we've completed it now, of all of the current two-plus-two agreements that MJC has with local high schools in order to get a better idea of what needs to be done moving forward to ensure that faculty, deans, and our partner high school teachers are all working together to effectively create and maintain agreements that serve our students and community well. We're also going to use our audit findings to inform the development of an updated curriculum process for these agreements, since the one we currently have hasn't been updated for some time. Many of you participate in the Board Policy Committee meetings, and I'd like to thank you all for the robust and meaningful conversations we've had on district policy, particularly that relating to smoking on campus. Faculty have been vocal in their support of MJC having the ability to declare itself a non-smoking campus. And I know that changing longtime policies can be difficult, and I appreciate your willingness to review district policies and to consider the needs and desires of MJC faculty and students on this matter. We have in Senate, we have Resolution S23B up for a second reading, which is a resolution commending student participation in shared governance during a very difficult time at our college. We're also working on the faculty hiring procedure. It's nearly a 30-page document, and faculty hiring is one of the most important areas of Senate purview. So the plan is for faculty to take as much time as needed to review and amend the document this semester. Once it's passed for a second reading, it will go back to Columbia College for their Senate to review it, since it is a shared procedure. It won't be done in time for this round of hiring, so it's important that we take our time and end up with a clear, solid procedure that supports our hiring policies and commitment to equitable practices. We are making progress in our accreditation and assessment work, and we welcomed faculty data coaches to the team this semester. I appreciate their willingness to step up and serve MJC as we work toward more effective, efficient, and meaningful assessment processes. I'll keep you all informed as this work continues. Lastly, after hearing the public comment today about some of the possible impacts of a fitness center on campus and the report out from the Board Finance Committee about the plans perhaps being even bigger than suggested, I want to say that I look forward to seeing these plans go through our shared governance process. Our Resource Allocation and Facilities Committee has broad representation that allows for really meaningful feedback on some of the unconsidered benefits and problems in planning, and it allows for plans to go through our resource allocation model to ensure that our spending reflects our goals and values as an institution. Our Academic Senate receives regular reports from our Resource Allocation and Facilities Committee, and I know that this is a major plan that will generate broad interest from our campus community, so I look forward to some robust conversations. Thank you all for your time. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
One question. You mentioned the two-plus-two articulation agreements, and I'm wondering if there's maybe an opportunity in the future to share some data with the board on the agreements, how many are there? How many students actually get the two-plus-two in our system? If that's happened recently, maybe before I came on the board, I can wait till it comes around again. But if not, I'd be interested in seeing that data as it is. Thank you.
We have a spot at the end of the agenda, I think, where we can add things like that, but just remind us. Thank you. All right, next is Lana. How did you know you were next?
I read the agenda.
I'm going out of order.
Oh, I just assumed I was after her. Hello, well, before Columbia College leaves, thank you all so much. Drive safe. Bye-bye. Hello, everybody. Lena, how was your trip? I can't wait to hear all about it. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Happy Monday. I'm not used to seeing you on a Monday. It feels like the week is half over now. But it's, we'll get started. Here we are in Week Six. Columbia College Academic Senate has already met twice the month of January, and we've been busy, busy, busy. Probably the most exciting thing is our baccalaureate degree application in Cooperative Land Stewardship, had to practice that title. So we're working on cross-checking that our courses don't compete with other bachelor degrees in surrounding CSUs or UCs. Dr. Tom Hostra of Forestry and Natural Resources is leading this charge and putting his due diligence, along with a support team of researcher Matt Canot, who's one of my former students, and I'm just, he's amazing, so I'm glad to have him on the team. We've got our admin Steve Amador and Raylene Juarez, Emeritus Faculty Ross Karkey, and myself as the 10-plus-1 Faculty Pervview of Degrees and Certificates Representative. And this is highlighting a need to develop a district policy similar to the 40-25 Philosophy and Criteria for Associate Degree in General Education and create the Philosophy and Criteria for Baccalaureate Degree in Upper Division Education. So we'll be looking into that. Articulation Officers at MJC and Columbia College, Matissa Senna-Schott and Juan Pablo Sanchez, are already starting work in this process. Other things going on, we've got elections for new faculty leadership at Columbia College are in process, our Curriculum Chair, our Academic Senate Vice President, President-elect, our Teaching Learning Community Co-Chairs, College Council Representative, lots of new things coming in this year. And with all of the new initiatives, new software, new regulations, complicating. Thank you for that, local president pays that. Yes. All of those new regulations do complicate things a bit. So we are going to be reviewing those job descriptions and MOUs to make sure that they are well in line and describing what each one of those faculty positions actually do. An update on our faculty hiring. Counselor Derek Wydeckt and myself, we each traveled to provide faculty representation at the recent job fairs in San Diego and Oakland. We greeted our potential colleagues and gave kind of the boots-on-the-ground perspective what it is to work at each of our respective sister colleges. Thank you to our admin team and Midori from HR for setting up a beautiful table to showcase our district. And I came away from the event feeling so excited about this new crop of hires that are going to be joining our team at our district. It's really, really exciting time in everybody's lives to be, yes, and there it is. Oh, you have it. Oh, pretty. Let's see, can you guys see this? Yeah, yeah. Isn't that gorgeous? Thank you, Lena. And let's see, move our night on along. Right, here we are in Week Six, and the pressure of the semester is in full force for our students. And so the support services are responding in kind. We've had Student Health and Wellness Center hosted at an open house with a meet-and-greet with the mental health and wellness teams and Basic Skills Coordinator. Our Starfish Program gives faculty the option to give kudos to students for continued good work, or referrals for counseling, or flagging students for support services. Our Cultural Enrichment Committee recently hosted the Feel, Heal, and Be Real Event in response to recent acts of violence in Monterey Park, Half Moon Bay, Oakland, and the murder of Tyree Nichols. Participants had the opportunity to share and be heard in a supportive space. Ongoing issues with self-service. We've got a request to bring back the access code or ad slip option for adding classes instead of only just add authorization for self-service. The new system doesn't allow to give you an access code to many students all at once. It has to be one at a time, and it does take quite a significant amount more time for faculty. And there are some students who still are not registered because they can't get through the new system, navigating that new system. And there is a continued request to say, we need our students, our YCC district students, to be able to register for either campus seamlessly, be able to find that class. Hey, there's an open seat in Lana Statistics class, let me grab that instead of having to apply to the different college in order to get registered. So please continue your efforts on that. Now, let's see, you should have gotten the Columbia College Tea Party flyer. Yes, do have that. Yeah, fantastic. So this is on March 10th from 3:00 to 4:30, and it is a fundraiser to support the Future Educators Club. And the QR code there, if you'll just snap it, that gives you an option to donate, even if you can't be there. So please go ahead and take a donation. And I have to give a shout-out. I brought a bag. I have props. So the Columbia Child Development Tea Party fundraiser, oh, excuse me, the Columbia Classified Professionals have a spirit lifting, flocking, scholarship fundraiser wherein you can donate a fee to decorate a colleague's office for the day. And today I was flocked, so I have about 20 of these flamingos in my office. My office looks great. And we have been told that we are not allowed to decorate President Tran's office, but Chancellor Young, I think you probably would have the purview to do that. If you'd like, I can put you in touch with just the right people to make sure that that spirit lifting opportunity and fundraising event, that you are also able to participate in that. Okay, nudge, nudge, wink, wink. Last thing, I am just so looking forward to the April. I know it's not here yet, but the April Board Meeting, being at Columbia College, it's always a great event to have our trusted board members there on our campus. So I look forward to seeing you there. And if I can put in one last plug, on April 18th, the Columbia College Orchestra will be performing, and I will be singing with the orchestra, and I'd love to have you. That concludes my report. Is there anything that I can express further excitement about for you? Oh, yes, you can buy flock. It would be very expensive for you, Dr. Tran. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Do you want me to give this back to you? Okay.
Next up is Dimitri. I want to know if you're going to sing for us, too.
I haven't been asked to sing here, ever. Good evening, President Beggs, Trustees, and Chancellor Young. Dr. Redwing, YFA laments the loss of your presence as a faculty member, but applaud your desire, your, as we say in Spanish, your ganas to serve as MJC's interim president. We look forward to your leadership. Last Friday, the district and YFA negotiations teams hammered out the revised CCAP agreement in 30 minutes, proving that when both groups want to finalize a matter, we can. I want to thank both teams for their commitment to reaching this agreement, which will result in granting high school students easy access to college instruction. May this practice continue at the table as we shift our attention to other important issues. YFA elections recently wrapped up, and I'm thrilled to report that Brian Green will be YFA's next president. That's it. That's the conclusion of my report. Any questions?
No, Dimitri, we always appreciate your report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll sing next.
Okay, okay. Next, we have the faculty liaisons on to the board, Alan McKissick.
Good evening, and thank you again for this opportunity to address you. As mentioned by the Faculty Association Presidents, the trend toward normalcy, or a new normalcy, proceeds apace. I noticed that my own students are more settled, engaged, and energetic this semester into in-person instruction. This positive energy continues to rise. And to add to Trustee Garrett's comments, I think it may not be too much to hope that once again in our future, there will be complaints about scarce parking at MJC. I want to address two board policies on your agenda for second reading, both of which are of particular interest to the faculty associations. These are Board Policies 3570, Smoking on Campus, and Board Policy 6305, Reserves. Each of these drafts are good examples of collegial process and policy review. They were visited and revisited, written and rewritten in the policy review process on the way to consensus between constituencies. Again, thanks to those who facilitated along the way in these discussions, including Kim Davis and Graciela Molina, and the District Policies and Procedures Committee, and Trevor Stewart and that committee, and the District Resource Allocation Committee. Special thanks to Board Policy Committee for their engagement and collegiality in their hearings, provided to representatives of faculty associations and to those of other constituencies. If the board chooses to continue the discussion of Board Policy 3570, Smoking on Campus, through another meeting of that committee, I hope that the speakers who spoke to it tonight will avail themselves of the invitation you heard from Trustee Nicolau to come and participate. I want to commend my colleague and the MJC wrestling coach for his remarks, but I also want to commend the response I heard from Trustee Richards and the assurances that we're in preliminary stages with lots of discussion and process to go. Lastly, I want to commend the broadly representative screening committee, the Chancellor, and the Board for appointing Chad Redwing, interim president of MJC. You have chosen a person of proven and trusted leadership, broad and deep knowledge of MJC's programs, and long-established commitment to the college and the community. Congratulations to interim president Redwing, and to all of the above for this step in the right direction. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Any comments, questions? Next up is CSEA President Lovett.
Good evening, President Beggs, fellow trustees, and Chancellor Young. First off, congratulations to Chad Redwing for being appointed as the MJC interim president. We look forward to working with you. For the second month in a row, administrators have made decisions that violate the collective bargaining agreement of CSEA Chapter 420. Since 2020, CSEA has negotiated for a hybrid work modality, and each year, we are told, "Not yet."
It appears that her screen is frozen, so.
Do we, we can come back to it later then. All right. Just remind me if she gets back through, okay?
Amy, are you there? No, okay.
Okay. Let's see, so next then is 6.6, Chancellor's Updates.
Thank you, Madam President. To begin my report, I'm going to call on Dr. Tran from Columbia College to give us an update from Columbia College.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening, Madam President Beggs, chancellor Young, board trustees, colleague and community members. For my report, and also, I'd like to congratulate my colleague, look forward to working with you, Chad, and you know, we got this microphone workout, so we're good to go. Yeah, we're good. I'll guide you, we'll be good. Some exciting news at Columbia College. It's unique, right? In our role, we almost look at head counts, and we get nervous when we see, oh my God, my head count is down. What does that mean? In this case, for Columbia College, actually, for spring, our head count is down. However, our FTES is up, so meaning that our students are taking more classes. So in that way, we are up from last spring 5%. So that's positive, and we have a late start. So that was good, because I was like, oh my God, what does that mean? But it's all good, so enrollment is doing well. And our next step, as we already know, trustee Garrett shared, the incoming year 2324, I think we're in a good position. However, to build enrollment for 2425, that's what Columbia is looking to move forward. And we cannot do enrollment without the technology assistance. So my staff, my leadership team, are really digging into Starfish to really look at the two-year planning, also to look at, say, with the data that Starfish has, what is the alignment for scheduling? So 45 students taking biology, what does that mean? First, does the schedule align with their two-year planning, ed plan? Once we get that data, then the important thing is the predictive data. With that 45 students, what are we looking at in term of modality? How many sessions should be online, in-person, or hybrid? So our team is looking forward to working with Starfish and also with District IT to see if that is the data we're able to pull. And then we look forward to sharing that with the board as we plan out for 2425, because I think when Free For Me is over, everything, we need to be able to offer classes where a student need it, when they need it, and how they want it to be delivered. So that is our initiative on Starfish. The other thing that I'm very proud of our college, as you can see, with the recruitment of faculty, we did a beautiful job, and Lana did, but I want to do a shout out to our dean, Sean. He was able to put, literally, you can pick up and care with you, and he outlined beautifully the degree. So basically, I said Columbia is on the map. So based on those two recruitment, we literally got 140 interests in LA. Oakland, I believe Lana has 40 plus. So faculty are getting to hear about the good place at the district, Columbia as the boutique college that people wants to come. So I see a lot of interest in our application in terms of our faculty and other positions, so we look forward to that. And in addition to that, Columbia College is so proud, Chad, will you be able to send that, too? So we're having our job fair coming up. Can you believe that within Columbia, we have committed 74 employers are coming on Wednesday? It's a great partnership with Motherlode Training. So that's just to say how the support and the eagerness and the willingness with the community and employers to really come and hire our students. And we look forward to welcome Chad to our job fair as well. And then everybody's wanted to know my international trip. It was a huge success in a sense that I learned a lot about what is the market in India and Dubai, and we are perfect timing. So Dubai is working with Education USA. Their goal is to send 6,000 students to the USA, and the goal is to attend a community college, then move into a four-year. And we are putting through the application to be an approved college and district that student can come to us. And because of that visit, India, when I visit India, they also want to do the 6,000, and we have been invited to give a presentation at their national conference, August, September, to demonstrate the powerful relationship between a UC and a community college, and with industry, and how we work to put through a community college. So it was excited, our partner, a sponsor, myself, we met with the consulate, so it is bigger than just our district. It's really looking at the community college system and the whole India as a country is focusing and bringing their student. They were so in awe, the pre-med pathway that we have, and Chancellor Young working on the guarantee agreement with UC MaSed. So more to come on that with my thorough board report for the month of March on the international. But it's great. I obviously lost my voice. Lovely folks, a lot of, a lot of presentation, but I think for the district, it's going to help us really a lot for 2014-5 to line us right now for the enrollment. And the good thing is India and Dubai is in English speaking. Most students will speak English to get by, so that's good. And they absolutely love the idea of on-campus housing. The majority of folks say, wow, if you can share that. So I can't wait to see how we put together, perhaps a delegation, something in August, and really show our district how we work with the UC and CSU and industry to build out our program for international students. Along with that way, a partnership that I'd like to recognize is Dodge Rich. They're so wonderful, like a ski resort. We're going to give them a letter, they want to give our students discount ticket, employee. So just to say, we met, and we're going to have a joint partnership where we have a banner with Columbia and Dodge Rich in their lodge, to say, in partnership of a great institution, both organizations. So that's our first step. In addition to that, I also toured with supervisor Kathleen Haff last Friday to look at Groveland. It is a beautiful facility for us to offer our classes and our programs, community ed. More to come, but just to say that it's, the supervisor is dedicated, and we look at the facility, and we'll see how we can build that out. And Lana already shared about our baccalaureate degree. And lastly, we're just so excited. Our basketball team is doing well, we're 20 and 6. We're away this week, but next week, we'll be home, so please join us Wednesday. It's a very exciting time for Columbia College. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, MJC, Dr. Redwing.
All right. Good evening. Thank you to the YCCD Board of Trustees, chancellor Young, and our community for the opportunity to share my first MJC college-wide update and overview of the first five days of my interim presidency. Perhaps the best way to give you an impression of the dedication and work occurring on campus is to describe how our college and district worked collaboratively to confront the challenges of the West Campus repairs after a gas leak, which rippled, which had ripple effects throughout the week in instruction, student services, and college administrative services. As you heard in our LTAC report, first, thank you to the EOC and MJC Campus Safety, as well as Judy Lanchester and Facilities Planning and Operations for the scale, speed, and care of the work. As a college, our executive team launched a multi-pronged response, very proud of it. Andrea Wilson and her team worked with Jeanette Fontana to quickly update and publish digitally and print messages to students of where student services would temporarily be relocated, including the student food pantry. Vice President of Instruction, Brian Sanders, worked with deans and updated the instructional team with photos and notes from the field while pivoting classes, labs, and activities. At MJC, and my day one, we call that Monday. By Tuesday, Sarah Schrader took lead on Operation Taco Truck. MJC offered three taco plates with rice, beans, and a drink due to the closure of food services on West Campus, and from Tuesday through Friday, we served 1,750 taco meals. Great job, team. But there is more. Two weeks ago, we also discovered damage to a beam in the Cabaret West Theater in the El Capitan building on West Campus. In just 10 days, the Arts, Performance, and Humanities Production Team converted a much smaller sound space into an intimate 56 theater and choreographed piece that fit on a stage two-thirds its original size. Simply, it has been an honor and a privilege, and as I've come on board as interim president, to rely on such an extensively dedicated group of professionals. When not re-choreographing dance or coordinating Operation Taco Truck, the schedule also continues at MJC as we offer curricular, co-curricular, and extracurricular activities to empower our students. For example, Emily Lawrence and the MJC Foundation welcomed Felix to campus last week, a filmmaker and MJC alumni who shared his creative process and experiences in the industry and career opportunities in film. Also joining the panel on Tuesday evening was David Boring, local graphics artist and design business owner, and Andrea Ovaya Herrera, an MJC international student from Guatemala who filmed the documentary on coffee practices in her native Guatemala. Moreover, the Western Governor's Center, the Western Growers Center for Innovation and Technology, the California Food Department of Ag, and the MJC Ag Program offered a half-day event dedicated to developing next-generation tech-savvy ag workers. Subsequently, a fireside chat with special guest California Department of Food and Ag Secretary Karen Ross took place in the afternoon. And there's plenty, plenty going on in MJC virtually as well. Professor and Distance Education Coordinator Mike Schmetzhammer just published an article in the Journal of Education Research and Practice. It's a good overview of the humanizing online STEM project over the last few years, along with the research behind it. And so what's to come in the next few days, weeks? The MJC Foundation and Office of the President cordially invite students, staff, trustees, the community, and all to an inaugural innovation showcase. You're invited to celebrate the rising leaders of Modesto Junior College as student innovators have teamed up to identify, strategize, and solve challenges in our local community. The Innovation Showcase is an opportunity to watch student-led teams present their solutions to community problems for a chance to win their share of $17,500 in prizes. Judges from Lemelson MIT stand state, and our community will award money, which will be used to implement these impact-driven projects in our community. This event is happening on March 3rd. You should have an invitation at 5:30 on our West Campus, and you will have an invitation for an inauguration of our Innovation Center a little bit earlier that afternoon. This concludes my report, and thank you for the opportunity to serve you at MJC.
Thank you. We have the interim president selected, and so it is only fitting that I express my gratitude to the selection committee that carried out the work, including a member from the community, Cecil Russell. And with that, I want to mention that the search for the permanent president of MJC, you know, will go forward, and Human Resources will soon be sending a request to the constituent groups to send representatives to the search committee. So if you are interested in serving on the committee, please work with your constituent leadership and notify your leadership of your interest in serving. I also want to mention that we are trying to promote customer service training in partnership with Gallo, and the preparation is underway. There will be an update in the near future. And at this time, I want to introduce our general counsel, Karia Rasmussen, to all of you. She is from the law firm of Los Angeles Smith, and she is based here in Modesto. She will report to the chancellor and will work with the chancellor and the board on legal advice. Finally, we have been celebrating Black History Month, and there are different activities being planned, and I'd like to invite all of you to attend activities that are being planned in conjunction with Black History Month. That concludes my report. Thank you.
President Beggs, I just wanted to point out that Amy Lovett is back online. She's going to, if you'd like to call on her, she will keep her camera off.
Okay, sure. See if that works. Yes, Amy?
Thank you so much. Sorry about that, the joys of being hybrid and remote here, internet problems. So just in case, I'm going to recap, if you didn't hear everything, congratulations to Chad Redwing for MJC interim president on behalf of Classified Professionals. Now, for the second month in a row, administrators have made decisions that violate the collective bargaining agreement of CSEA Chapter 420. Since 2020, CSEA has negotiated for a hybrid work modality, and each year, we are told, "not yet." Now is the time, as this is the fourth violation, unless than one year. We, as YCCD, are being reactive instead of proactive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board of Trustees on behalf of CSEA Chapter 420.
Thank you, Amy, and we did hear you that time.
Thank you.
Okay, so where am I? Oh, I think the COVID-19 health update is just for information purposes, right? Okay, so look in your packet for that. And same with 6.8, the travel report that is listed. And then we need to move 8.3 up to now. Our order was a little off. So if you will look at 8.3, it is approval of the employment contract for interim president of Modesto Junior College.
Madam President, I'd like to enthusiastically move that Dr. Chad Redwing be officially appointed as our president.
I think there's.
I'm picking it.
Need force to get into the minutes, so before that happens. That's on hold, but you'll get it. Okay, so item 8.3, okay, I read that part, let's see. Before the board can take action on an item regarding the salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes the interim president of Modesto Junior College, the key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes. The key terms of this agreement are as follows. Number one, the term shall be from February 6, 2023, through June 30, 2023. Number two, the employee's annual salary shall be on the executive salary schedule range E4, Step A, with doctorate, in the amount of $215,295. Have we fulfilled that need? Okay.
So I just, I just want to make it that it's pursuant to Government Code 53262.
Sorry, I couldn't remember where he put in his motion. Okay. All right, so now, Milt's motion, do we have a second?
I'm picking it.
Nancy jumps in there.
Nancy, you've been, you've been cut out so much this evening, you get the second, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, you do a roll call vote.
I just want to confirm, I think you had said to hire the president, so this is to approve the employment agreement for the interim president. Okay. Thank you. Trustee Hinton?
You're muted.
An enthusiastic eye.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
And trustee Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, zero opposed, motion carries.
All right. Let me get to the right page here. Page 98. All right, so we are up to the consent agenda. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approves Action Items 7.2 through 7.11 of the consent agenda. So moved. All right. Then he made the motion, Milt made the second. Roll call vote.
Madam President, if I may indulge the board for a moment, as customary, we
As customary, we'd like to recognize the retirements that are on the consent agenda under personnel.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to recognize Donald Borges, 22 years of service, Dean, School of Agriculture, or School of Agriculture at Modesto Junior College. I can't say enough about Dean Borges's contributions to the district, what he's done for our students and for the community and for local agriculture as a whole. And I deeply appreciate what he's done, and I wish him well in his retirement. Gail Bravat, 26 years of service, Assistant Director, Child Development Training Consortium, Child Development Training Consortium at Central Services, 26 years of service. I think the title speaks for itself. Child development is very important, and I can only imagine the children and the impact she had on the community as a whole. And again, wish her well in her retirement. Rhonda Campbell, 14 years of service, Human Resource Specialist Benefits, Human Resources at Central Services, one of our Classified Professionals. Rhonda has, you know, as our employees navigate their employment and their human resources and different challenges that come up, I'm sure Rhonda's had a tremendous positive impact for our employees, and I wish her well in her retirement. Dennis Gurvin, 28 years of service, professor of Biological Science, School of Science, Engineering, Mathematics, Modesto Junior College, and 28 years of service. It's hard to replace a professor in that field of study, and we will deeply, deeply miss him and wish him well in his retirement. Nick Sander Medakis. If you say it fast enough, it comes out okay, right? I've learned that. So 22 years of service, Dean, Athletic Director, School of Fitness and Health Professions, Modesto Junior College. I give a shout-out to our athletic expert on the board, Dr. Milton Richards. Dr. Richards, would you like to say anything about Nick?
I would. When Nick was the Public Relations Director for the chancellor, he spoke with me about becoming an athletic director, and he actually put together a compliance newsletter that I got him to continue when I moved to Simon Fraser University. So he's really a success story of someone who really wanted to change careers at a later point in his years, and he's just done a fantastic job. He'll be sorely missed.
Thank you, Dr. Milton Richards, and I concur. I will miss him as well as we all will. Sherry Suarez, I'm glad she's last, actually. Sherry, 25 years of service, Events, Facilities, and Duplicating Manager, College and Administrative Services, Modesto Junior College. I got to know Sherry when she wore her hat as the California School Employees Association, Chapter 420 Local President. Just a tremendous person, a tremendous resource. And I know I will miss her deeply, but retirement has other opportunities, and I wish Sherry well in her retirement. And thank you for indulging me, Madam President.
Thank you. I don't consider that indulging. I consider it necessary accolades. All right, so.
Roll call vote. Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Davis? The vote is seven, zero. Motion carries.
All right, we are now up to 8.1, Board Policy Second Readings. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees conducts a second reading and approves the following policies, 3410, 3570, 4230, 5013, 5015, 5040, 5050, and 6305, as attached to the February 13th agenda. And for those of you looking, we're on page 137 of 195.
Move that we adopt the stated board policies.
Kim is here.
You gonna talk to us?
There were some recommendations that we need to make sure the motion will include them.
Yes.
As well as, I think, Committee Chair Hinton had stated that she would like to request to pull Policy 3570 to bring it back for a third reading. So additional recommendations were presented on Policies 3410 and 5050, and were provided to the board for review. In addition, there are some changes to 3570, which will go forward for the third reading.
I'd like to amend my motion to pull Policy 3570, the smoking on campus.
I second the motion.
Madam President, if I may, before we move on, with regard, I know we're pulling it, but, and it's gonna come back, 3570, smoking on campus. We've talked about this for a long time. We've heard from academic senate. We've heard from our classified employees. We've heard from the one group that this is probably gonna impact the most, and that's our students. And student leadership has spoken. I've heard from the Faculty Association. It came from an employer who adopted a very strict non-smoking policy many, many years ago. And, you know, did that mean that people gave up smoking overnight? No. Was it difficult to implement it first? Absolutely. But I feel it's in the best interest of our district. It's in the best interest of public health, and it certainly is in the best interest of our students. And if we truly, as far as I'm concerned, care about our constituency voices and we care about our students, we will, you know, we should adopt a policy. I understand Columbia is different, but with respect to, and that can be argued, you know, differently. But we should empower as much as possible to move to a smoke-free campus. So thank you.
Just to comment, I don't know the logistics of this, and I don't know how it's done exactly to become non-smoking, but this policy allows us to be non-smoking. What it says is that if there's a transition period or whatever, that the chancellor will work with the college presidents to regularly evaluate the number and placement of smoking areas, if there is a transition period. And the reason for that is because they showed us a map of where the smoking areas are, and they were clustered around Founder's Hall. There were so many, it was weird. And so we thought, has nobody looked at this? So anyway, we could become whoever makes that decision, but the board is often accused of overreaching, and it seemed like it wasn't. I don't know if the board can just say, we're just, this is it right now, because I assume there are steps or transitions or whatever that people have to go through. So that, trying to get that language right in the policy, we were not quite clear if it was correct. So I don't know if Nancy still feels like...
I'd just say, Madam President, I hear what, you know, I'm listening to what you're saying, but you see CSU's, a number of other community colleges, many, many government employers have done this years ago.
Right, but I don't know if they did it overnight or not. I don't know how it happened.
I think, as the student representatives have said, our number-one goal here is education. And if we can educate towards a path of public health, and we should be a leader in that, allowing any type of smoking on campus. You know, I learned not to smoke from my parents and from friends. I did it one time, and I'll tell you a funny story. I got a cigar from an attorney my mom worked for, and I did some landscaping work for this individual on a Saturday. I brought it home and thought it would be cool. So I got behind the fence. Well, I didn't get on the right side of the fence because my father could see the smoke from the window. He took the water hose, and all of a sudden, it's raining on my head and said, "You will not." No, no child of mine, even though I was 20 at the time, will smoke. And that reinforced my parents' position. Look, I say that because we need to be a leader in this. And saying there's gonna be room and ambiguity for smoking stations or whatever you wanna call them on campus, I just, I can't support any of that. And I may be outvoted, but we've heard from our constituency groups, and it's time to be a leader on this. It's time to make it an absolute, and that's how I feel.
The reason why we're pulling it is so that we could figure out through legal counsel how we can work it through, because most of the members that we have are limiting to smoking on the sidewalks at MJC and so off-campus and working towards, with the health services to help those that smoke to stop smoking.
Well, as someone who's never smoked marijuana, I'd just like to say that I think it's time to get the policy ready. And I would ask that at the next board meeting, I know this should be future considerations, but since we're here, at the next board meeting, let's vote on the policy up or down. There's been enough discussion, enough research. Let's just put this to bed. I agree with the trustee Garrett.
I do believe at the Board Policy Committee, there was a recommendation from the college to put a statement, a blanket statement, in the policy. MJC is non-smoking. Columbia has designated areas. So it's to specifically state that MJC was non-smoking. So I know that the Board Policy Committee didn't, but that was a request, I mean, a recommendation.
Did we put that in, Kimberly?
No, we didn't. And so the statement that was placed in there was just, "The intention of the board is to ensure a safe environment for all. On any campus that permits smoking, the board directs the chancellor to work with the college president to regularly evaluate the number and placement of smoking areas."
Okay, well, I'd like the request to be put in next time, so we'll deal with that next month. Thank you.
I can't support any smoking areas on campus. Just making my position clear.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
President Beggs? Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Yes.
Thank you. The vote is seven, zero. Motion carries.
All right, the next one is 8.2, First Reading.
Yes, we have two recommended revisions. It's to Policies 1200 and 2210. And there were no other additional recommended revisions.
And you gave those to us.
And I have provided that to the board, and this is just the first reading. These will come back to the board next month as amended.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we already did 8.3. So now we are at 8.4, Executive Compensation for College Presidents. And the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees discuss executive compensation for college presidents.
And Madam Chair, the hour's late, and I'll make this very simple. What I'd like is for the board to give me authority to work with staff to come back with a proposal. Since all the discussion about our president, I've done a lot of research, and I believe that our compensation level is okay, but it does seem, I've talked to several presidents, CSU, junior college presidents across the country, and I do think we might be missing the boat on a housing and car allowance to be made. So I'd like to work with staff and bring that back for the next meeting with the recommendation. So we really don't need to have a lot of discussion. I just hope that I'm able to bring that back and us to get it.
Is that okay with everybody else? Yes, no? Do we need a motion on that?
Done. I was trying to unmute. I'm okay with that, trustee Richards, but I would like to include the chancellor. And I understand that he's not interested. He's not gonna be the chancellor in 10 years.
The chancellor specifically asked not to be included in it, because I initially had him in there, but he asked to specifically not be included. That's why he's not in there.
I understand, but he's not gonna be the chancellor in 10 years. And this is a policy, something that we're bringing up. He doesn't have to accept it. But I think that we need to bring up the whole, all, both of them. The upper.
Okay.
My opinion, I can be voted down.
Okay, so that can go forward if we don't have any objections or... Okay. Next up is the request for future board agenda items. Board members can request, and we had a couple of those already, but you wanna reiterate that?
Just appreciate a report on the two-plus-two articulation agreements that we have with district high schools.
Darren, you had one?
Yeah, I have a couple. I'd like to get an update, because it keeps coming up where we're at with the bookstore up in Columbia. You know, it kinda goes away, but then it comes back, and we're still getting what I perceive. I could be wrong, but what I perceive from student leaders up there is still problems getting books and resources and things like that. So I'd like to revisit that and get an update on where we're at with that. And then my second item, and this is for Trevor Stewart. At our next Finance Committee meeting, I'd like to get a breakdown on, I mean, we do it routinely when we go over the budget, but I would like an agenda item on the budget at MJC, you know, a breakdown of MJC versus Columbia. And what I'm looking for is FTEs at one, FTEs at the other, state apportionment at one, state apportionment at the other. I know Columbia gets money for being a rural college, so whatever revenue is coming in, I'd like to get a, I'd like to just get a down-and-dirty breakdown on all that at our next Finance Committee meeting. I'd appreciate that. That's all. Thank you.
I'm just reiterate a point I made earlier. I love a technology update for the boardroom in Columbia College, how we can ensure that the public is able to join and access future board meetings.
Okay, we're good?
I'd like to get a report on our housing for MJC students. It's in the budget, but I haven't heard anything since I've been here on the Lutheran housing situation.
Yeah, and that would be a good idea. All right, I think, so you've got those. Rosiella, you got those. Okay. All right. Comments from the Board of Trustees? Let's start with... Anton, no. Okay, Antonio has no comments. How about Don?
I wanna thank the chancellor for keeping the board apprised of the gas leaks and the campus closures. Felt like we were very well-informed. Appreciate that. And I know you haven't been feeling well and going the extra mile to keep us informed of all that's going on. We certainly appreciate. Truly appreciated the C cap presentation tonight. I'm wondering that maybe we could have like a bell or something that we could ring every time we approve a C cap agreement and just keep a tally. That would be fun. The CTE scope of program presentation, very impressive tonight. I had the opportunity to attend Columbia College Foundation meeting of the foundation. They graciously welcomed me to the trustee, to the board, and what a wonderful group of people. Man, they love their college up there, and they wanna see the kids get the best experience possible. And they wanna see the kids get the best experience possible. And that Promise Program that, that has been instituted to provide college tuition, I guess, for all students in the area is, is a big dream, and, and they are making it happen. So glad to be a part of that and appointed to the Foundation Committee. I also attended the Association of Stanislaus County School Boards as the YCC District Representative. I'm a non-voting member of the Executive Board, but it turns out I need to provide a report every month. All right, so I'm looking forward to that, and I might reach out Graciela and chancellor sometime for some, some nuggets of information that we'd like to share with the, the representatives of all the county school boards. And thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I think I saw you at a conference, too. Darren?